The first one is here. Andrew Nate with the Greater Wichita Partnership. Good to see you again and appreciate you being here. I know Andrew has worked on economic development for some other cities, other areas. And it came up, I know, at our last, I'm talking about our history here. We've had our land debt and we've made some different steps and we're getting ready to kind of take a different turn to try to continue to really accelerate the selling of the land. And we just want to, I appreciate you being here to kind of, good to hear an objective opinion on, you know, what else can we be doing, should we be doing to market the land that we're not doing, is there something we're doing that we shouldn't be doing? And also, you know, looking at the pricing too.
Sure.
So with that, I'm just going to kind of turn it over and this is, you know, for our workshop here, it's, we're pretty informal. As you can see, I'm still eating dinner. But we, you know, so obviously no binding actions. We can't take that here tonight. You know, we're so respectful of everybody, but it is, it's a flow going back and forth. So I have questions for you.
No problem.
Appreciate you being here and I'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ty, for reaching out. Yeah, happy to share a little bit about how we do economic development and ideas, just kind of partner with you guys on that. And yeah, please interrupt me any time with questions. I've done economic development for 15 years in two states and so have learned a few things over the years, but certainly have a lot to learn myself and something more we can do together. So to give you kind of just my quick background and role, so I'm the Executive Vice President of the Partnership's Economic Development Team. So I've been on the team about two years. I came from the Kansas City area where before I was Executive Director of the Shawnee Economic Development Council, so Shawnee Mission, city of Shawnee is about 70,000 people on the western side of Johnson County. I was there for five years as the Director and before that was in Overland Park, kind of leading business recruitment for the Overland Park Chamber. And before that was in another stint in Shawnee, but previously in rural south central Missouri, where I kind of got my start in economic development. So I've worked in small rural communities. I was smack dab in the middle of west, in the Ozarks, in between West Plains and Springfield, Missouri. So I've worked smaller communities, rural communities, kind of urban and suburban. So a little bit of a perspective, but I was not looking to make a move when I came to Wichita two years ago. I was really happy in Kansas City, but my wife's family is from just up the road here in, near Peabody, in Marion County. And so we came into Sedgwick County all the time for different events, for River Fest and just getting around to see friends and family, but really wasn't looking to make a move, was happy with what I was doing, but was intrigued by what was happening at the Greater Wichita Partnership. So I won't go on for a long time about that, but just to give you the quick story, you've probably heard the organization, we just had our third birthday. So the Greater Wichita Partnership is a 10-county public-private economic development organization. So we have contracts for economic development services with Sedgwick County, which covers a lot of our services with you all, but then also the city of Wichita. But then also, we support nine counties around Sedgwick County doing economic development. A lot of that jurisdiction and that work came out of the BRAG process, if you're familiar with that. The Blueprint for Regional Economic Growth was a study that was done in 2015, led by Wichita State University, but involved many, many community-wide organizations, probably almost too many to count and to list. But the Greater Wichita Partnership kind of took a lot of that work, not solely, but probably took the lion's share of that work and have been advancing the BRAG plan. So really what the BRAG plan was, was a plan and it was a kind of a cluster development strategy of what is our economy in south central Kansas based on and how can we grow and expand that? And it touched on a lot of different facets. In fact, right now, our team, in consultation with our board and some other community groups, are actually updating that plan now that we're three years into it and we've seen opportunity to kind of refine that and take some steps forward. So the Greater Wichita Partnership, we have six priority areas. We focus on downtown development, is what most people are kind of familiar with, and Jeff Flohr is our CEO and that's what he's been in the community, helping with downtown Wichita for a number of years. But we also work with the Chamber of Commerce on perceptions, both internal and external perceptions of the community, workforce development. We have some workforce development issues and initiatives. We also work on talent. Talent recruitment is a keenly important thing in economic development, has been for many years, and now it's almost the buzzword that many communities and regions and states are focusing on, is how do we get more talented individuals in our particular area or jurisdiction? I think that's five. And then lastly, jobs. So the key area that I, the team that I lead is around jobs. And so we're trying to constantly, on a day-in, day-out basis, recruit new companies to south central Kansas and Sedgwick County, keep the ones that we have, help those businesses that we have grow and expand, and help through entrepreneurship, help those that maybe new ideas and new startups kind of thrive. And we do that in concert with a lot of organizations in the region that we support. So that's a super high-level commercial on the partnership. I'll pause there if there's any questions or comments about the partnership, anything you guys have heard or questions? No?
What is the, what is the partnership between?
So it's a public-private partnership. So we have about 125 private sector companies that are our investors, and then we have some public sector participants, namely Sedgwick County Government and the city of Wichita. We have a little over $2 million budget, we have a staff of about 17 across all those different six areas that I talked about. A lot of our staff have been focused on downtown promotion and marketing, but we've kind of filled out our team on some of those other areas. But we're a nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(6), so we're a nonprofit organization. And around the United States, this model of kind of public-private and a focus on economic development is really taking root. A lot of the work that we do, and even in Wichita, was historically done through the Chamber of Commerce, and we have a great relationship with the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. In fact, GWEDC was a division of the Chamber, which helped kind of spin out of the Chamber and helped start the partnership. But around the United States, that's a fairly common model, whether it's Chamber of Commerce or Private Economic Development Group, that's kind of our area of focus. And we found that the public-private model is the best because at the end of the day, what we're trying to work on and promote with you all and your team and your city staff is a public good. We're trying to drive jobs and economic investment, tax revenue in our, in our area, in our geography. But at the same time, the private sector is keenly interested in that as well. So we've also found that we're able to market, maybe attend some trade shows, take some consultants or some real estate brokers or some companies out to dinner in a venue, a vein that maybe wouldn't be as difficult or cumbersome if we were in the public sector. So it just provides us more latitude and more applicability to be able to market the way the private sector markets. So that's a quick kind of recap of the partnership, if that makes sense. I'll talk, I'll touch on a couple of things of how we market the region, and you guys are a big part of that. I told Ty when he asked me to speak that I'm happy to speak with you all about how we market the region and how you all might do that because we see Bel Air as one of the communities that really gets it right. I know there's a desire in this community and probably this elected body to see more and to grow more and to do more, but I would commend your city staff for being very aggressive. They're one of the more consistent, engaged participants we have in the region. We have lots of economic development folks that are engaged in the region. We have a quarterly, what we call the Regional EDO, the Economic Development Organization meeting, that we host, pretty much all the economic development professionals within that 10-county boundary. And then that includes a lot of economic development professionals that I would describe, like Tristan and Ty, that are wearing other hats. It's not their full-time, 40-hour-a-week vocation, just economic development. There are some cities in the region that have that, but I know there's other hats that they're wearing. But highly engaged, highly connected, always responsive. We send out, kind of when we get an inquiry from, that I'll talk about, from around the United States, we know, we can always count on Bel Air being one of the communities that will respond quickest and fully. Oftentimes, we get a information back that's just, hey, here's one piece of information or here's our flyer, here's one thing, and that doesn't fully help us respond to the opportunity, and your team does a really good job of that. But I know there wants to be more and we want to see more. Some of the ways that we market the region is that first and foremost, what we focus on, I have a little experience in my background in retail, but we focus on non-retail jobs. Our organization is focusing on what we call primary employers, those companies and those employers that are bringing dollars into our economy, not merely churning existing dollars. That's a viable economic development strategy. I've worked in communities where we focus on both primary and non-primary employers. It's especially important now as we talk about talent and getting that quality of life, that quality of place, that retail base that so many residents and residents desire. Our organization just isn't staffed up to do that, so we kind of limit our efforts to primary employers. We do that through the BRAG plan, so we focus on the industry niches that that BRAG plan kind of calls out, and I won't go through that in great boring detail because I don't want to bore you guys in your work session meeting all evening. But so we focus on industries. We'll go to specific industry trade shows. So we just got back from, within, obviously aerospace aviation is a big sector for us. So we just got back from the National Business Aviation Association Show, MBAA is the Business Jet Show. Some of you might be familiar with that. So we go to that trade show and we present Wichita and south central Kansas as an option to do business. And at that particular trade show, we're the dominant player from a community standpoint. There's really very few communities that target that niche of aerospace, business jets. There's not that many other places that do that. You'll see some community sales folks, economic developers, a few mayors randomly here and there, walking around, walking the show, but nobody has the presence that we do. But when you go to Farmborough and Paris, which are the commercial, the biggest commercial aviation shows in the world, there are lots of cities, lots of states, large countries that are promoting, hey, come do business in Spain. And so there, we're competing against much larger geographies. So other industries we'll target as well, so we do it by industry. We also do it by kind of business connection and relationship. So some of the folks that we target are some of the same folks that your team is engaged with, is the local real estate community, the brokerage community. We are actively involved with the real estate community. Marlon Penner, I know, is helping you guys here, one of the best in the region when it comes to industrial development, industrial leads. He's going to hear that, so you've got a really good team member here. Marlon's one of them, but there's a slew of others at some of the real estate firms that you all know, that you see the signs. So we're actively networking and engaging with those folks because they're going to hear oftentimes first of who's out there poking around. Hey, I got this call from this client in Seattle, I don't, they didn't give me a name, but here's what they were asking for, here's the information, all they got is an email. We actually have a full-time researcher on our staff, so we get a little juicy nugget of information about a company and we will send Dwayne deep in to try to figure out who that company is or figure out how we can advance that project or that opportunity. Another unique area that we market towards, and a lot of folks in the public know about it, but we market to a boutique set of consultants called site selection consultants. So around the United States, there's, depending on who you count and who you throw in that bucket, there's probably 300 to 400 consultants that specialize in telling companies where to put their next location. And whether that's doing an optimization strategy, if you have five distribution facilities and given your growth, you need seven, or you need to consolidate and you need three large ones, these consultants, usually experts in geography, tax law, business climate, those kind of things, demographics, those consultants advise companies on where you should do that. Those consultants are housed in some of the major firms that you would think they would be, some of the largest real estate firms in the world, some of the large attacks and accounting firms, so Ernst &amp; Young, Deloitte, KPMG, all have boutique practices that specialize in this. And if I'm covering ground, you already know about, stop me, somebody, but, and then there's just boutique practices. So we reach out to those folks, we know who all of them are. They're usually centered in the markets that you would think around the United States, New York, Chicago, LA, Atlanta, Phoenix. So we're actually in each of those markets. Our team travels to those cities and calls on them because we figure rather than chasing the Fortune 1000, we'll chase their consultants because oftentimes they're going to have projects on a re-incurring basis. Even if we strike out and miss a project this time with somebody, we develop that relationship and it could be an opportunity down the road. So unfortunately, every other economic development group in the United States knows that same playbook and is doing that same thing, so you would not believe the struggle it is to get in front of these folks. We've had in the past where the Greater Wichita Partnership has brought some of those folks into town. You have to entertain them and wine and dine them because again, these are folks that are being highly sought after around the United States, so they're going to every Super Bowl, every Final Four, every event you can possibly think of, they're going to. So it's an extremely competitive world, I would say. I think Ty knows this and you guys might be aware, but around the United States, there are 3,000 economic development organizations. Any given year, there's probably 200 economic development projects of, major economic development projects, that's usually considered of over 100 to 200 jobs, new jobs announced. So at that rate, you can do the math, it's roughly one out of every 15 years, if everything was equitable, that every community would get one. So it's highly competitive, highly aggressive. Our board doesn't settle for numbers like that. Our board doesn't say, hey, Andrew, go get 200 jobs a year. Our actual goal is 1,600 jobs a year. Last year, we were a part of about 2,200 jobs being created. Again, at the end of the day, business owners and businesses create all the jobs, we're just kind of along for the ride, helping them. But this year, we're behind that goal. We're about halfway to our goal, and I sit here in October and I only have two months left, so it's been a lean year. But we've had some near misses this year and some close calls, so we're going to be redoubling our efforts for sure too. But that's a little bit on kind of how we market and sell the region. And what I think you'll find from, whether it's companies in certain industries or real estate professionals or consultants, is they find that, you know, there's a lot of competition out there around the United States. And to start at a broad level is the best approach. So what we've heard constantly is, sell your place as a region, as a state, and then as we get down to it, then, once we know at the end of the day, if we're going to invest in a facility, it has to be somewhere. It has to be on this piece of property, which is in the city limits. But I would advocate your guys' national and maybe even international marketing, you know, selfishly, self-servingly, you know, continue to leverage us. We see as an extension of your team and we want to continue to keep doing that, but for a community the size of Bel Air, and I've worked in communities this size, to market all over the world might not be the best use of your resources, but leveraging with us. I know you have a really strong relationship with the Kansas Department of Commerce. They've been kind of up and down from a funding support level, but our hopes is that going forward that that will level off and they will get increased support. I'll say this, just as an anecdote, our state used to be seen as one of the best in the United States for a state our size, for our economic development model and approach. In fact, we invented the model of having domestic offices around the United States. So we used to have Kansas recruiters in New York City, LA, Chicago, that lived there and they were the point of contact for starting relationships with these consultants that I talked about. Now, all of those people are gone. And we're slowly building back those offices and those relationships, but our state is, it's no great shock to you guys, our state's been kind of up and down.
Right. Those are state employees?
Some of them are, some of them are contract employees. They were on contract because the cost of living to live in New York City is, would make it uncompetitive to have somebody live on kind of the state pay scale, if you will. But we've done it a lot of different ways and I don't know that there's a market difference between the two. I've seen great success with the contracts and there are some that are state employees over the years too. So that's kind of how we, as the partnership, market and want to market with you. One of the key things that we have to market is product. So what we talk often at our Regional EDO meetings with our communities is product, having us be aware of, like Sunflower Park, we have to know about that. We have to know what you have and kind of being ready to respond because we'll get an inquiry from a real estate broker, one of these consultants, or from the companies themselves, and oftentimes, there's a very short timeline on having to respond. And over my 15 years of doing this, it's really morphed and changed into kind of the initial screen now is more about real estate. So if they can figure out, do you have that park, do you have that building, what do you have, then we'll get into that more detailed analysis than there used to be massive spreadsheets and comparisons and lots of questions. Not to say that we still don't get those and work on those, but more often than not, it's about, hey, do you have the site, do you have the building? And I'll say that far more often than not, it's do you have the building? So we have probably 65, 70 active projects in our system right now. I pulled the numbers before I came over here. Well over 40 of them are looking at existing buildings. They want to move into a building. Sometimes that's a function of time, that my lease is up in nine months and I have to move into a building. Sometimes there's preference, they know there's a lot of options out there. A lot of times, it has to do with risk of building a new building, that's a lot of risk, we don't know. We often lead our pitch and our presentations around, how can we de-risk the situation? How can we communicate to this potential company or this prospect that choosing Bel Air, choosing Sedgwick County, choosing the Wichita region is the least risky option for you? And we do that with good relationships, good solutions, good land options. We really lay out a really, I think, a really strong case for workforce about how you can find the workforce for whatever your industry or whatever your particular need is. Some things were stronger than others, but we make a really good workforce case that helps de-risk that equation for that potential company. So that would be one thing that I would kind of throw back to you all is, as you think through your strategies and your ideas of moving your land forward, always look under the lens of, how can I take the risk out of this for that potential company? Is there something I can, process I can cut? Is there something I can do for them that maybe eliminates that risk? I mean, every time you can eliminate risk, and even in your terminology and how you talk about it, Mayor, even coming from you and your voice, the language you use and the rest of you as elected officials use matters greatly because again, you've got to remember, there's lots of great places in America, and they're going, if they're on a tour, like we've had here before, if they're on a tour, they're looking at some really solid options. So anything you can do to communicate where your safe bet, where you're least risky. The other thing I always try to remind folks about this is that there's very, companies go through this process of selecting a new facility very rarely. The community, the company we had here just a little while back last year chose two plant managers to do their site search for them. They weren't experts and they hired a consultant, but at the end of the day, it's those internal company officials that have to make the call. And if you're that CEO or you're that HR manager or you're that plant manager and you have to make a recommendation to the CEO or to the board about, pick Bel Air for this site, you'll probably keep your job if it's the safe bet and something goes wrong and something goes bad, but it was within the margin of error that could have gone bad in lots of places. If you picked the one community that was out there a little bit, just a little bit aggressive, weren't sure if that timeline was going to be met, and it doesn't work, that's when you're in trouble. So again, we couch everything around risk and how can we be the safe bet for you? So yeah, so that's, I mean, I know that's a lot, I'm just kind of talking off the cuff here, so if you have questions, please tell me. But some of the things I thought of, how, and going back just a couple of years ago to my time in Shawnee and communities, of how a community like Bel Air can take more steps forward and kind of be more aggressive, I think the approach you guys have had has been very aggressive. I would say you're one of the more aggressive communities in the region, but I think there's still things you could do because I don't have to tell you all that you're just, just outside of the core. I think you're an inner-rank suburb and you're very competitive for many of the projects we have. In fact, I pulled my numbers. Right now, the 60-ish projects we have, we have Sunflower in on six of those, so 10% of our projects we have you guys in on. Three of those are over 50,000 square feet, but over a dozen of the projects that I have in my system right now. And again, I'm just tracking primary employers. I'm not tracking, we get a call about a restaurant or retail shopping center, we pass that off to the chamber, or really what we do is we pass it off to communities because we just don't have the bandwidth to help with that. So my work, my program of work is naturally bent to larger companies, but over a dozen of the projects I track right now are over 50,000 square feet. So generally, the larger projects, but those are the ones that, again, they have to get it right and they're looking usually at very broad geographies. Oftentimes, we'll compete with other regions, usually several states, usually in the central time zone. So that's kind of the geography that we're competing in. The kind of advice, I kind of wrote down three things I think might, if I were in your guys' shoes, the things I would think about would be, number one, to be really focused on what you want. I think knowing what you want and focusing on it could really help you. I think you have done that to a large degree, but to the extent that you can do that more, there's a lot you can do with digital marketing. I know you're doing a ton with social media, which is awesome, not many communities are doing that, but you know, amplifying your voice with social media is really important. But there's a lot you can do now, engaging in a digital, if there's a digital marketing firm here in the community, you're a consultant, might live in the community, that can help you kind of amplify your message of, once you start to target, once you start to specify, okay, here are the types of companies that we want. Who do we want in the community? And that's really your all's direction and leadership. You have to decide, what are the types of companies we want and are there certain industries that we have an advantage for? We have a UP rail line going through here, how do we leverage that? Then target that. I would even go so far as to target it specifically. I don't know of any community that I can think of, I know there's some communities in Texas that do this with BNSF, but I don't know if you could target with UP and reach out to Todd Hackel and the UP team to say, hey, within, on the UP line, we're going to give you an additional tax payment. We want all businesses to grow in the community, but because you're, we're leveraging that asset and leveraging that resource here for UP clients, UP customers, you get an additional incentive. I mean, really being laser-focused with kind of what you are because there is so much competition and it's tough. That would be one thing. There's a lot, you know, a lot of ideas within there. The other thing I would talk, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, with that, with the digital marketing, that's good to hear. I went to the ICSC conference.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And had, and I'm amazed how I have to go out there to talk to somebody from Kansas City, but you know, it's just.
So try and be, and then being in Kansas City, trying to get in front of all the developers and they wouldn't talk, let's just meet up at ICSC.
Exactly.
So, yeah, it was crazy.
But that was one of the things I came back with and we talked about that here fairly recently, it's two or three workshops ago, and just some little itty-bitty things from, everything from like, let's freshen up City Hall a little bit, make it look a bit more modern, we're doing some things here.
Yeah, that matters.
To working on a website specifically for, so.
Yeah.
Walking around with those specifics or a URL, a QR code, something.
One of the biggest things that I did when I was in Shawnee, and you wouldn't, it's just kind of, wouldn't make sense, but to do a map of your sites and then do a logo map and overlay over that that shows who are the retailers or who are the organizations that you have in the community. You have the school districts building right out your back door here, you have City Hall, but then to mark on a map, and even going down Web Road and into Wat Rock Road down in Wichita, showing where are those other retailers? Those retailers especially like to see who else is in the neighborhood, and they want to see who else is at the next intersection. I mean, so a lot of it is visual. That's the number one thing we learned from the retail brokers is, if you're pitching a shopping center, you're pitching a parcel, give us a map, an aerial map, and show us what's physically put on there.
That was exactly what I was told when I came back with even like drone footage.
And it sounds dumb to do that. It's just like, really, that's all that matters? That's what they want to see.
And that's one of the things, because learning while I'm talking, I'm like, oh, we're so close to 254, we're so close to 135, we're so close to, I don't know, you know? We can show them that here.
The other thing, I would do that on there, and that's kind of gets to my next one, the kind of tools, or kind of, as many tools as you can have in your tool bed, the better because you never know what's going to trip somebody's trigger. But going back to retail, one of the number one things they look at is traffic counts. So having your, you know, engineering department, your public works teams doing traffic counts even more than the usual, that's vital. They want to know what is a recent traffic count. If you give them something from two years ago or five years ago or 10 years ago, it's going to go to the bottom. They want to know. And unfortunately, that was probably my least favorite part of economic development when I was in Kansas City, was retail promotion because it's very objective. It's numbers-driven. Do you have the traffic counts? Do you have the average household income? And you guys would show very, very well from that standpoint. So I would promote the heck out of average household income. But it's usually two or three stats that almost every retail chain wants to see. There's no salesmanship to it. There's no, but we got this great community part, we got this school, we got this thing. All those things can help, once you get a business here landed or get them on the hook, but to just to get in front of someone, all they want to see is the data. But on that front, I think you can have better data. So a couple of things that I've done at the community level is kind of a gap analysis or a leakage study. Wichita State's Center for Economic Development and Business Research will do that in spades. They've got a ton of data that many communities don't take advantage of. They can basically tell you, your Bel Air residents spend X amount per year on, you know, Mexican food. I mean, there's just statistics on it. If you don't have a Mex, I apologize if I remember your businesses, but if you have a Mexican restaurant in the community, great, but if you don't, your residents are going somewhere to buy those goods and services.
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay, well, yeah, exactly. So John also would be a great one. But you can have data to go to John and say, wait a minute, we've got this study from WSU that says we're leaking this much per year that residents are going into Wichita or they're going to the next community over. So you can do that study. And then, Mexican food is just an easy one, but a hardware store. You can take that to a hardware store and say, hey, Mr. Hardware Store Owner or Site Manager, there's an opportunity here. And have WSU, it might pop something up, I think you all probably know the community And have WSU, it might pop something up that I think you all probably know the community really well. There might be a category out there that you didn't realize. Wait a minute, there's a real opportunity here. And from a public policy standpoint, you can see, wait a minute, isn't it difficult to move the decimal point and determine how much sales tax revenue that could be? So that's one thing I've done, kind of leakage studies or gap analysis of kind of what that, what that looks like. Traffic counts I talked about for sure. Trying to think under retail. ICSC is a great one. It used to be, I don't think the statistics true anymore, but it used to be that one third of all retail lease contracts in the United States were either signed or advanced at that one trade show.
I bet it's higher than that.
Yeah, it's, the show's been up and down, so, but exposure at that. I don't know that I would jump into, I think if there was a broader regional approach to kind of getting a booth and exhibiting, because it's very expensive to exhibit there. But we've actually had some communities present to us to say, hey, what if we could, could we tag onto the Kansas City receptions and events and those connections of those real estate firms? So there might be a way for the region to do that together. Maybe you throw a little Wichita area reception or a South Central Kansas reception at ICSC, something like that. That would be an idea. Some other tool ideas would be, I mentioned the amount of inquiries that we get that are looking for just buildings. Having a building is vital. You're going to have more competition than you really want just down the road here in Wichita with the web business park. You have the Michaelis Real Estate Firm throwing up 100,000 square foot building right now. There's another one on the horizon that's just over the, around the corner from that. So you're going to have 200,000 square foot buildings right out your back door. Now, on one hand, that's competition. On the other hand, I think that's a positive thing. It continues to prove out this kind of northeast side of the market. And I think it'll give you all data and a vantage point to see, hey, could we leverage with a developer and look at a spec building ourselves? I wouldn't advocate that you all go out and decide to build a spec building yourself. There's too many unknowns and too many things that you can get wrong. I've been a part of those in other communities. So I would caution that, just my personal opinion. I don't know that I would go to that step yet. I would take it progressionally. I would say we've been aggressively, aggressively marketing this park, maybe take another step there. Maybe figure out a development structure or partnership with a developer. Incentivize that developer maybe a little bit more. Let them take that risk, but then you encourage them. But I think you will see a night and day difference on the number of inquiries you get if you have a building versus just land. And then it will actually also helps, whether the building's in Sunflower or not, will help your park. Because if you have a building that gets more people to your community, to the site, engaged with your team, sometimes that building's not going to work. More often than not, it doesn't work. But then once they're already there, okay, well, wait a minute, let's go take a look at that piece of land. So, and there's a number of communities in the region that are actively thinking about that. Partly sparked by the city of Wichita, kind of updated, you're probably familiar, updated their spec abatement program. Wichita has struggled for many, many years on not having product, not having available buildings. So they updated that policy last year and it, it's worked. There's three developments that are building 100,000 square foot buildings right now.
So what they did, if I understood, they did a tax abatement for that specific type of building, right?
Exactly. So the way tax abatement usually works is it's usually can contemplate it around a company that's going to come in and create this many jobs, pay this amount of wage, and you can do the economic impact study. What we did, and state law allows you to do this, is we basically did a, a potential or speculative development. What would an average user of an industrial building like this, what would they generate in terms of employees per square foot? And what's the average industrial wage and those kind? We took some, some models and some estimates, did the cost benefit analysis off of that, knowing that it could be off higher low. But then the city council adjusted their policy accordingly, so. And it worked. It helped get, again, it's that risk. It helped that developer get over that. It's just a little bit of risk to pull the trigger on a building all by ourselves. This is used extensively in the Kansas City area. Almost all of the spec developments in the Kansas City area either use a tax abatement form like that or a TIF.
Is that something that you think we should consider here in Bel Air?
I do, I do. I, I think it will help you get to that next point. I would, I would figure out a partnership. I would figure out a development team. I think from what Todd tells me, the Michaelis Real Estate Team owns land here in the community too. They'd be the first one I would talk to, to see what their engagement might be. Obviously, they're going to have their plate full with their building coming up out of the ground. But I can tell you guys that we have a number of inquiry, we have far more inquiries looking at those buildings than we do looking at Sunflower. Just because again, we get inquiry, it's not uncommon for us to get an inquiry that specifically says, in bold, all caps, typeface, send us existing buildings, only do not send sites. Because what happens is these consultants or these brokers get just everything thrown at them and they want to delete stuff. I often say that site selection is kind of a misnomer for these consultants. It's really site elimination. Their process is to get hundreds of sites down to a couple that they can present to their clients. So they're looking for any and all reasons to cut you. So our team works very hard to just make the next cut. That's what we talk about a lot, just make the next cut. And your strategies kind of change a little bit if you make the next cut. You get them to town, you're on a site visit, dog and pony show is a little different than just making that first cut, so. But yes, I would consider that. It has to make sense for the public, but I would definitely look at that. The other thing, last thing I would talk about is relationships. I think you've got a really, really good start with relationships for sure. But I think I would leverage the relationships you have even more. Certainly your city team is certainly a part of that. I would look at more resources there when it comes to dedicated staff. I think you've had great folks here, but that's not their only hat that they're wearing. The communities that we have found to be most aggressive are dedicating time to that. So that's something, how you structure that. And I know there's operational costs and limited budgets all around. But I would give some serious thought to how do we dedicate some stuff? Maybe it's a contract position, but I would, I would definitely look at that. I would also look at your brokerage relationships. Again, I think Marlin is outstanding. One of the certainly top two or three industrial developers in all of Wichita, knows everybody. But I think Marlin's also a realist. Marlin's practice is largely here. He's got national relationships. Marlin isn't able to spend time all over the United States. If it were me and I was sitting in that chair or any of your chairs, I would start to think about, how could we do a co-listing? Could we work with Marlin, the local expert? I've got the best guy in Wichita, but then also who's a firm from Kansas City? Who's a firm from Oklahoma City that we could work with? Particularly one that's got a national brand, that's a national affiliate. The six largest real estate affiliates in the country are not located in Wichita. So CB Richard Ellis comes to mind. There is a, there is a CB Richard Ellis broker in Wichita. Actually a really good broker when it comes to retail. So that might be a conversation starter with, hey, we've got this retail land too. They would have to bring somebody out of their Kansas City office to focus on industrial. But that individual that they would bring that I happen to know pretty well, used to work at, in Wichita on the flight line on the old Boeing facility. So he knows Wichita a little bit, so. Whether they would do it or not, somebody like that, a different firm, an outside firm with a national reputation, you might be able to engage. I know I was pleased to hear your community's willing to pay a commission. There's a lot of communities in our region because of the optics of that, that aren't able or willing to pay a commission on land. That's a, that's a non-starter. I mean, that you're, what you're essentially doing is you're carving out a whole segment of the contacts and the potential leads out there. So I was encouraged that you all are considering that. You might look at how you structure that. If you were going to do a co-listing, you wouldn't want to disincentivize Mr. Penner. You would want to make sure that that relationship stays strong. So, you know, you might look at adjusting that or modifying that. There are some communities that will push their commission split. If you get into that percentages, they'll push that higher. So that's certainly something to, to think about. Two organizations that I think you, I know you're already actively leveraging is the UP, so continuing that relationship. But I would figure out a way to be the UP's number one choice in Kansas. It sounds like you are, but what about the Midwest? Newton has gotten a fair amount of interest and activity from being a certified site when it comes to BNSF. There's only a few in the Midwest and Newton, their KPL is one of those. Is there an equivalent of that that you could engage the UP on? Have you engaged their, you know, who are they talking to? Who are their companies? I don't think it's a problem at all to go to their offices, Mayor, and, and have them see the validity and the veracity of how you mean we want to promote this place. That's a huge relationship for you. I think also NCAT just down the road, just down Web Road is a huge opportunity. And you guys are one of the, certainly the largest and probably the most business ready to go sites that is closest to WSU Tech and NCAT. That would be a relationship that I would make sure that we're fostering and there's their engagement there that could, could lead to something. I don't know, but the number one thing we sell in economic development is talent and workforce. So the fact that you can leverage that as much as you possibly can, I think you would, I think you would benefit from, so. Yeah, last one is kind of obvious and I know you guys are doing it with social media, but, and I'm sure you've done this before, but it's all about relationships and who you know and who knows you all. And your residents are some of probably your best advocates. So I don't know how much you've engaged the residents on, hey, you, you're coming home to Bel Air, but what about working in Bel Air? Or any sort of campaign or messaging around, you know, work here too. You don't just, you, you love the quality of life, but what about the quality of place and quality of work? I mean, something around that of engaging these seven or eight thousand people that you have in your community. You guys have a lot of some stellar developments. And I know without, without even looking at the numbers of the data, you have a lot of business owners here. So is there a way to engage that? Obviously, we would want to do that with a cooperative spirit and I'm pleased that you all always have been. I always share, kind of my last anecdote, I always share our story about Bel Air and how you guys are so cooperative. As a region, we had a project a couple of years ago that the mayor of Wichita actually came and joined you, sir, on kind of a pitch for Bel Air. And that's exactly how we want it to be as a region. That certainly you all want things to happen here in your city limits and help your tax base be that win for the community and for, for jobs. But the next best thing is for it to be in Cedric County and then in the region and then in Kansas and then the Midwest if it has to be. But that doesn't happen everywhere. Where I came from in Kansas City, it didn't happen often. And so to be in a place that wants to sell regionally, wants to promote regionally. I know you've grown quite a bit and you've had some success for sure. Some of those have come from the area and that's okay because those, these are growth stories. That's going to continue. But I think having that cooperative spirit and that willingness to work with other cities, give other cities a heads up when, hey, XYZ company might be coming to call. Make sure they don't read about in the paper. That's always kind of a sensitivity, just as if you would, you wouldn't want one, you wouldn't want FedEx to leave and have you guys read about it and, you know, the end over paper or whatever. So that spirit is, I think, really positive and is really strong already. I know REAP is working on some things to kind of advance that a little bit more, but we're pleased with how that's gone. I mean, again, anytime we have an opportunity or a call, it's, it's really easy to work with you guys, so. That's a lot to absorb, so I'll just kind of stop there if there's more questions or thoughts or what can I help you with?
I say, I really appreciate all this information. I'm going to try to make sense of my notes now.
Sure.
Some things are circled, some are asterisks, some are.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll go back and have some conversation about that. But it's good to hear that we're doing a lot of things right and there's a few things we could tweak a little bit too. So I really appreciate that objectiveness. We've talked a lot about how, it wasn't that long ago, I mean, I'm talking the last 24 months, where talking about changing anything, investing anything wasn't even an option. We, you know, so we had this opportunity and so this is the time that we're working on this. So this is a very timely presentation. We talked about being aggressive with the land and many people here ran on that.
Sure.
That's what we want to do cohesively here.
Yeah. Well, I would say the timing is, to strike while the iron's hot, and it is hot. We have more activity, more interest now than we've had in the last several years from, I've only been here two, but from what the team tells me, than the last several years. We, I, you heard from CDBR and WSU kind of at the economic summit, if you were at that a few weeks back. While there could be storm clouds on the horizon in terms of the economy and a recession, most economists don't see that. We're not seeing that in our judgment either, that right now there's a ground swell of momentum, especially manufacturing. Warehouse distribution for sure too, but I think there's a real opportunity. That, the wave's going to crest at some point, it's not going to last forever.
Right.
So striking them now would be advisable.
Well, that's one of the things we're going to talk about. Matter of fact, the next item.
Sure.
We have an RFP to start a master park plan because you talked about the traffic counts. And that's one of the things I kept hearing, exactly what you're saying. I mean, you talk to a restaurant, ABC, they ask those two numbers. If you fit in, if you, if those two equal this, they'll talk to you. If it doesn't.
Yeah. It doesn't matter how good your sales pitch is.
Right. So, and part of that too is with, you know, having, one of the things we've been talking about is with this master park plan we have this land, just north of City Hall, it's got, you know, ridiculously high specials and. You know, with that, that's, you know, one of the things that we want to kind of move forward to. Like I said, just an RFP is worth it, beginning stages of it. But is that, I mean, I'm hoping that that's kind of something to the economic development.
Well, I think it could, it can't hurt for sure. I think it absolutely could help because, I mean, more of retail, and again, I don't do this every day anymore, but it wasn't that long ago when I did. It's about the quality of place and it's about that environment. And they really, retailers want to see, we're making this investment here, will our customers come here? I think the key thing for you all is to determine who is that retailer? Who's the one we want? You might even look at an opportunity of polling, maybe you've done this, so apologies if it's a repeated idea, but if you've polled your residents, who are the retailers we want to see? Now, they're going to come, I would imagine if it's like so many places I've worked, they're going to come back with Cheesecake Factory and Trader Joe's. And that's fine. Just from a demographic standpoint, those are difficult for Wichita to get. So you might help them reframe their expectations a little bit. But I don't think it hurts at all. And then to leverage that, to go to a retail, to go to Hardee's and say, hey, Hardee's, you are one of, whoever, Chick-fil-A, you're one of the most sought after in our community. And oh, by the way, because we're the leaders of the public policy, we took that data, hey, residents, we listened, we heard. Now, if you're a restaurant of this, and you might have to be careful with your legal department on how you structure that, but of fast casual restaurants were the number one category. So for fast casual restaurants, we're going to provide a reduction of building permit fees or whatever. I mean, any sort of carrot, anything that you could then start to shave off that, those specials. Because, yeah, if you get into that next cut and they start to look at the numbers, then they're going to be like, whoa, wait a minute. I can benefit from the Bel Air demographics in the Bel Air trade area, but I can just be right down the road here in Wichita and still get all that and not have to pay those specials? Thank you very much. That'll matter. The other thing I would, if you're talking restaurants especially, I would really start to focus on, and if we, if our office ever gets time, we will, but we don't have the bandwidth to do it right now. But really focus on who the franchisees are. A lot of the decision-making process in restaurants is done at the franchisee level. So the John Rolfs of the world. The franchisor, the chain will have some say and it has to meet their criteria. A lot of them put that on their website. It's very explicit of what they want. This much traffic count, this kind of end cap, this kind of building, this household, household income within three miles. So you'll know just by looking at their website, if you pull your residents, here's the 10 we want. Do we have, can we meet their criteria? Okay, yeah, these six we do. But then you need to try to figure out who, who are the franchise, who has the franchisee rights to that, if it is a franchise, in our state or in Wichita? And I have to just pick up the phone and call them and ask them. They'll usually tell you. Or they'll tell you the real estate firm that's got that contact to be the go-between for that, that real estate franchise contact. But I would go to that. And then another strategy I've seen some communities in North Kansas City and Nebraska employ is, who in our, what citizens, residents in our community are tired of working at, you know, Spirit or wherever, pick, pick a big company? Do you want to be a business owner? Do you want to own a franchise? Well, we've done all the data. We know that a Chick-fil-A is the number one thing that'll work. Try to be a matchmaker of franchisee, franchise to a resident. That's a strategy that could work. There's a whole, the Omaha Chamber of Commerce actually does a whole matchmaking session around that. We actually sent some of our people in Shawnee to it to kind of learn from them, to try to emulate that in Shawnee, to create that match. Because a lot of times what you'll find is that restaurant says, yeah, we love Bel Air. Yeah, I know you're, I'm shocked by how well they know communities and how well these, these real estate people know your intersections and your trade areas. They know your community and they know right where they would put one, if they could find a franchisee. So they'll often tell you that, find me a franchisee and we're golden, we'll go there. Not every restaurant, not every retail chain is a franchise, but the vast majority of them are. And so if you can find a franchisee to operate it, or call around to the other, the John Rolfs of the world, call around to the other franchise operators and say, hey, wait a minute, where do we stack? So anyways, it's been a while since I've worked on retail, so I kind of get excited about it. What else? You've got other things on your agenda, Mayor.
Well, actually, Mayor, I've had a couple of questions. You mentioned tax abatements a couple of times.
Sure.
So how, how big are tax abatements or tax policies to what, to the marketing task?
Sure. I would say, kind of depends a little less for retail, but for all types of commercial development, industrial, office, retail, kind of lump them all together. Incentives aren't the number one driving factor. Workforce is the driving factor. I would say retail, it's probably a little less so. Retail's going to be more about the trade area and the market. Can I make money in this location? But certainly industrial and office and kind of filling up your Sunflower Park, the end of the day, the number one thing is workforce. If we can help you, with you all's help, prove that you can find the workforce, that usually gets us most of the way there. Whereas incentives are important because they break the tie. There's a lot of great places in South Central Kansas. There's certainly a lot of great places in America. And so to break that tie, well, we could be successful here, we could be successful here. The land is about the same both places. First of all, the land's a fairly low portion of the cost anyways. The equipment investment, labor, that's the really big math. But all of those are the same. At the end of the day, which one do we go with? And again, you got to put yourself in the shoes of that plant manager or that CFO that doesn't rarely do it. They're looking for an excuse. They're looking for something to go back to their board or their CEO and say, yeah, we weren't sure which of these two, but you know, in this particular city, they gave us this. And you can, they can hang their hat on that safe risk to make that recommendation to the board. A little less so on retail. On retail, it'll be difficult to provide a tax abatement for retail because state law doesn't let you do that. You would have to either do TIF or CID in terms of retail. But to answer your question on office and industrial, incentives are important, but they're important, they're really important because they break the tie. And I would say that Bel Air has a lot to be proud of, but again, a lot of communities around you do too.
To, to kind of add to that question, there's the initial tax abatement, but then the other thing I've wondered about is overall ongoing tax rate. How, how big of a deal is that in the selection process? So, you know, we're, we're pretty competitive from a tax rate perspective amongst small communities, but we're right next to Wichita that's quite a bit lower from a tax rate perspective than we are. How, how does that factor in?
I think it factors.
Does it affect the tax abatement?
Yeah, I think what the advantage you would have is, I think that's primarily going to, it's going to affect all businesses for sure. It would primarily affect an owner-operator, a business that owns that facility, that plant. Oftentimes they're, you know, their, their operating business is a, is an LLC and they're in another LLC that owns the building. That's the owner, the ownership group that owns the building. But by the time you, by 10 years is the length of a tax abatement. That building's value is depressed from an assessed value standpoint, more or less to offset that, that cost. If your taxes are higher, it's going to get offset over time because of that reduction in assessed value. Now, that doesn't mean that, wait a minute, I could still have a cheaper tax on a neighborhood next door to mine. But once you get them there, once you get them to build that investment, and more than anything, that inertia of having their employees go there, their customers go there, just it's easier. More now, way up for whatever reason, that could always, always.
I was wondering, you know, in that initial selection, are people more interested in the upfront tax abatement or the ongoing, you know?
They, they analyze, they analyze both. I think from a, you know, and it also depends on who it is. If it's a locally owned company, if it's a small company, if it's a major national, you're getting the manufacturing division of a Fortune 500 company. Or you're getting the warehouse of some larger company that's got facilities all over, it's going to matter less so. But if it's that local manufacturing machine shop, that local company, Epic Sports, where this is their main facility, it's going to matter more. But I think at the end of the day, I think it's mostly going to matter is, will this location help us get people? To the extent that you can help address that issue of this location is good to attract workers. I know your team does a great job of interviewing your existing employers, always asking that question. How are you doing getting employees? When they say good things, you know, have them speak into your lapel, so you don't tell me that kind of stuff, give them those testimonials. Because that, that's what's going to be most important.
That's a good idea. With regard to the spec building, buildings, um, do you know of an example where that has like failed miserably or just not worked out? Or the community has lost their shirt on there?
Yeah, personally, I worked on one in Norwood, Missouri, so that was 15 years ago. That built a 60,000 square foot spec building, built it with the wrong size overhead doors, the wrong size concrete floor thickness. And that community did it, that community invested in it. And just because they picked a couple of things wrong, they had some inquiries and they had some people looking at it, but it just wasn't quite right. And there were things that you couldn't easily fix. The thickness of the concrete floor couldn't be easily redone. We could have redone the overhead doors, but that was also, if you're going to spend that kind of money, you might as well redo the whole building. So that, but a developer taking that risk. That's why I think partnering with a developer, figuring out a way to provide an extra incentive to that developer to take that risk. Maybe you structure it to where, hey, developer, we'll do this much for you completely, but until you get it partially leased, we'll do this much. And we have a development agreement that kicks in that says, once you get, I'm just making up numbers here, but half of it leased, then the incentive is reduced or whatever. Again, it's all about risk. The developer doesn't want to do it because he doesn't want to spend a couple of million bucks on a building and have that interest carry and lose his shirt on it. So how can you, just to the time you get it filled, or the time that risk goes away, how can you incentivize it more? But then you all, if I was an elected official, wouldn't, I don't want to give everything away for forever. So how do, how does it reduce once that risk goes away? Once, and I don't know what the magic number is, if it's 50% or whatever, but approach it from that standpoint is my advice.
Thanks.
So you're, I know the, the big thing, and I think, weren't you at a, a Kentucky Association meeting about six months ago?
I was, yeah, yeah, down in Derby.
Down in Derby, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, but one of the big things I think was that the region was lost on this 100,000 square foot building because it, it comes and goes and it's not available, it's not available. That's what spurred Wichita to get three spec buildings or I heard four, maybe there's.
There's, there's five or six that are being talked about. There's three that are under development.
Three under development, okay. So, um, do you think that 100,000 is really the only thing that should be spec? Or would it be wise for an investor to come in and inspect a different sized building, a smaller one? Because 100,000 is a pretty good sized building.
That is a pretty good sized building, yeah. There's certainly, um, other sizes, and I know there's even, within the Wichita policy, they give some latitude for what they consider flex space. So that would be space with a little more office finish, with like a little bit of warehouse space in the back, kind of think of your, like your contractors. So their, um, policy actually goes down to 75,000 feet for that kind of space. But I think in a community like Bel Air, that's probably worth evaluating. Does it have to be 100,000 square foot here? I think the development community will tell you that. They're going to see, I shared with you our numbers that we see as an economic, a regional economic development entity. We just see a fraction, guys, of what the real activity is out there. So engaging a commercial development firm to what would that look like for, you know, what would make sense in our market? I think that's a wise approach to say, it doesn't have to, no, it doesn't have to be 100,000 square feet. Maybe it's 50,000 square feet, maybe it's something less than that, but.
Be flexible once you allow.
Right, yeah, and, and maybe the pad, the concrete pad is larger to where it could be easily expanded, I mean, those kind of things. Another thing that I've seen other communities do, again, if I run your guys' seat, I would take progressional steps. I would do a little bit more, see what the market says. I'd take a little bit more, see what the market says. Another thing that other communities have done has basically been a virtual spec building. Hire an engineering firm, hire an architecture firm to mock up some plans, mock up some drawings, actually take those through your planning process. I know here in Bel Air, you don't have a real arduous planning process. Other larger communities, that can be a challenge. Kansas City, Missouri, we got a lot of businesses in Shawnee because Kansas City, Missouri's process was difficult and slow to get through. So what we did was kind of created a virtual spec building program where we actually took you through the planning process. This building, this 50,000 foot building has already been approved. Take the plans and run. We already spent the $10,000 of civil fees, take it and run. And we can accommodate, you know, we can make, with easy tweaks, slight modifications, and only one month planning commission approval as opposed to the 90 days or whatever your guys' process is. So again, that de-risks, okay, this community's already gone through a little bit of the process. No, I don't want a building exactly like that. I want the EFS to be different, I want the face to be slightly different, but I know that's, that's a variance. So I'm going to take those, you know what I mean, like expedite in the process. So I could throw dorky ideas at you guys all night, so.
No, these are great.
No.
Great ideas, great information.
Yeah, well, but my advocacy would leave you with just keep up the good work. I think your team is really aggressive. We love supporting and basically selling on your guys' behalf because we know we're going to get a good response. I know you've had some success for sure. There's a lot of, a lot of communities in the region that haven't had this level of success and are, are sitting with industrial parks with weeds and grass growing in them. So we're encouraged by what you've done, but I love to hear a community lean into the conversation and say, okay, what else can we be doing? Other, other ideas and strategies because, um, I mean, that's all you can do. So we're right there with you. Anything we can do to help, we're happy to, so.
Who else should we be talking to to get other ideas and perspectives on what we do here?
I think you have a relation with the Kansas Department of Commerce. I would ask them, they're not probably, at the local level, they start to lose some of that connectivity to real estate and development. They're probably going to have a little less of that, but I think they would have a keen perspective on industries and targets and the types of companies, the types of incentives. That's all within their wheelhouse for sure. I would imagine you have sister cities or communities that you probably model after or kind of peg yourself against from a metric standpoint or comparison standpoint. I would look at some of those. I don't know how much the league has in kind of this research vein. I don't really think they do. Yeah. So I'll give that some thought of kind of who some other voices would be. But you guys are off to a really good, well, you've been off to a really good start. There's a lot of success here, but I know.
And maybe this is a question for mayor, but when's the last time we did a, a pri, review of our pricing or our, of our land?
And we worked with Marlin on that. And I think we, we actually raised the prices a bit last year. Based on, you know, the, the, um, what we had been selling for and what the interest was and stuff.
Well, and let me stop you there. Even that right there, the fact that you're charging for your lots, which aren't bad at all, given your proximity to Wichita. There's a number of communities that are just giving away for free and they're not able to get the traction and the momentum that you guys are. So the market's telling you something right there, that you're getting inquiries. I know everyone wants more inquiries and goodness sakes, our team does too. But that right there is telling you something, that you're able to have a product here that's, that's worth something, which you should be proud of.
The one thing that I really like that, um, and I'd like to explore with, with, it's, there's several things here I'd like to explore a little bit, if, if council's okay with that. But one that I really liked is the, um, looking at, I mean, we, right now, we're in the market at 6% commission. But we know that realtors, whether it's retail.
Commercial, industrial, yeah, they're all the same, yeah.
Home, residential, that's how they get paid is commissions. And, um, and you know, Andrew, I, you know, I obviously I like the idea of having a, a staff dedicated to do this, but, um, that takes additional funds and things. But if we were to look at increasing that commission to 10%, 15%, 20%, I mean, think about that. You sell, uh, you're selling ground for 10,000 an acre. You, you, you know, you give up a thousand or $2,000 in commission, but you pay that when you make the sale. And at that point then, we have the realtors trying to sell our land because they can make 10% or 5% rather than 3%. You know, name the percentage.
I'd rather get 8,000 acre than nothing per acre.
Yeah, and then we have them selling it for us, not us. Because, you know, if, if you have an opportunity as a, that's where you make your income. If you have an opportunity to make 10% on a land sale versus three or five or whatever, you're going to show them that 10% every time.
Yeah, I would agree. And I would, I would couch that by saying, for, for me doing it, I would kind of lean on the tenant rep side. So just like when you guys buy your house, it's the same premise. There's a buyer that gets, gets half and the seller gets half. Marlin is your seller, your landlord, your existing rep. And I would figure out a way to kind of encourage him as well. But you could easily structure something that, and if you're at three and three, you could go to a 4% commission split for your, your existing, um, existing property rep. And then maybe a 6% split for that tenant rep, for that company rep. That's where you, I think you're going to get the most interest because, and everyone likes working with Marlin. So that's the other thing, is you've got a really good partner there. Real estate's just like everything else, it's a people business. And sometimes when you say, oh, I have to order that, okay, forget it. Marlin's really easy to work with, really good, so I think that, I think that could help you for sure. But yeah, that's going to jump off the page to some of those tenant reps out that are showing companies around to make sure that they have it on the list. Because at the end of the day, they're trying to feed their families too.
What percent do you think makes it jump off the page?
I think just what he's described, 10%. I think, yeah, if you went north of that, even better for sure. But what I've seen a lot of places do is that, kind of that additional doubling the tenant split. So getting to six, so a lot of times what you can do, just again, like somebody buying a house, you can, if there's not somebody on the other side of the transaction, that broker can get the full 6% split and they really like that. So I've seen a lot of people double it. So instead of three and three, it's three and six or four and six. So that's probably the most common. But to the extent that you've run the math and you figure, hey, why not stand out even more and go to a 12% or 15%? I've even seen 20% commission splits. I don't know that I've seen much higher than that in Kansas City, but I do know places and communities, some of the landlord, the property owner themselves say, I want to offload this property, I'm going to be aggressive with my commission split.
I like that idea. Uh, I like the idea that you suggested, I had, I was going to suggest, I got it actually in my note here too, the co-listing idea. And maybe put an RFP out there for realtors to co-list or, or like to, to co-list. Do an 80/20 of the commissions, at least 6% and 80/20% so that if the co-lister makes the sale and Marlin is, still gets, gets a piece of the pie, he's not cut out or vice versa, uh, somebody else as well. But maybe we do an RFP and maybe even have them, even an RFP.
And I guess my, my advocacy on that would be exactly that, but to look beyond Wichita. Because I'm, I'm telling you, Marlin's really good. I don't know that there's a whole lot of leads now. JP, Yagan, they're great. NA, Martins, they're great, so, but Marlin is too. So I don't know that there's tons of leads out there that you're not hearing about from Marlin that, that Yagan and Martins are going to get you. If it were me and my, I would look to, who's that firm in Kansas City? Who's that firm in Oklahoma City? Tulsa, UP, I would ask the UP, who do they like working with the most? Is there a broker that, do they have a broker? That would be how I would kind of approach it.
That's a good, I like that.
Because then you have the best of both, you have the local expert, but then you have, and I don't know which market to tell you is which. I come from Kansas City, so I'm biased, but I would look at that. And you'll be able to tell pretty quickly, are you getting that Oklahoma City or that Tulsa, that Kansas City firm engaged? Because they're going to have to, they're not going to open an office here for one listing. So they're going to have to send a broker, whenever they have a visit or a tour, they're going to send somebody. It's going to have to be worth their while. But you never know, and we know of a couple of firms that are kind of leaning towards this market anyways. So we're happy to share with you offline who some of those names might be, if you, if you're interested.
Yeah, please do.
Mr. Mayor, but at the same time, if we would go with that, do you not think that we need to raise Marlin's percentage?
Well, I think that raising the overall percentage is a good idea. Then you split that 80/20 or something, something like that. So he's suggesting.
Here's a go at mash, natural.
So if you said, okay, the overall commission is 10% and the selling agent gets 8, 8% of the 10% or 8% total. And the other co-lister gets 20% of it, it keeps them both engaged regardless of whether Marlin is the, is the selling broker or, or he's just, is, is the tag along broker because he didn't get this, didn't bring this deal to the table, okay?
As long as we don't lose Marlin.
Oh, no, we don't lose Marlin, he's very good.
We lose him, we're a curse.
We're not going to.
I, I get that.
Ma'am, I would wholeheartedly agree with you.
I believe it. We've worked with him too many years.
He's one of the better, uh, real estate professionals that we work with.
So I just didn't want to step out of line and do something that would make him angry and say, well, you know, go or go stop it because I'm not good.
And I think we'd want him involved in the conversation. It's made progress here, so.
If, I would.
Getting his input.
I would pretend to speak for him, but if I know Marlin a little bit that I think I do, I think he would, I mean, you know him really well, I think he would.
He would welcome the conversation.
Absolutely, yeah.
So what I'd like to do is mull over a lot of things here.
Sure.
Um, have some conversation with some city staff, maybe have some conversation with city UP, maybe Marlin. I think we're going to talk about how many more workshops we're going to have this year, but.
Yeah.
Obviously, this isn't something I can bring back next week. I hope you all would.
I hope not.
But, um, certainly would, would like to make a priority of this and I'm going to, can't believe talk is only two months away, but maybe right at the first of the year, um, come to you guys with, with I think some real suggestions with, with price tags and, um, and then get input from everybody and let's move forward. I mean, does that sound good to everybody?
I personally can't think of anything that's a higher priority than these things, so.
And there's several things on here that I'd actually, will start working on so that when we do have our meeting, I could, well, we, we've talked about, uh, and I think it's a great idea, the, uh, the spec building. I'll start working on that and so that it will be ready for you guys to review and you decide is it 50,000, 100,000, whatever. But all of the stuff's there, you put in the numbers and then it's ready to prove.
And when I, when I say, you know, I'll work on this, that means you.
Okay.
You and me, and me.
Okay. The royal way, yes.
Yeah.
And I'm happy, Dino's going to go with me, so I'm happy to give more names, developer connection, I mean, anything we can be helpful with.
I see a couple lunches in the future.
I eat every day, so no problem.
And then I'll get, I'd like to get ahold of WSU on those reports.
I think you'll be shocked by how much they can do for you. They're really good. I mean, we use them a lot as a region because there's just broad things that we have to have them do studies for. If I was a community in this region, I would use the soup out of them because they've got tons of good data. Patty Paddy would be the one I'd talk to.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
It's that stuff we've been wanting to do and need to do and now we can do.
Yeah.
So this is, time is perfect on this, great.
If you don't mind, I would like to hang around just for this discussion, if you're getting into this.
Absolutely. Our workshops are open to public.
I will, I will peel off after that, given that the police chief's in the city, I will peel off. Speed limit gets done, but.
And I will.
He loves to.
All right.
And Andrew, I'd say, and I would welcome your input.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Unless anybody objects, but.
I would also.
Okay, so kind of moving forward here on, on number two, like I said, phase one, uh, park. You know, we had workshop this a couple of months ago about moving forward with a, a, uh, engineering firm. Why can I not think of a word all of a sudden? Two, tell us what it's going to cost to design a park. I know at first, because none of us know how much it's going to cost or even with the design park, I know when you design even a street, now sometimes 40% of that cost is engineering. So when I saw these two at 12,000 or 14,000, and we have since learned that the 14,000 has said that they would do it for 12, part of being in public meetings, I, I was amazed that, pleasantly, pleasantly surprised. So again, this is, uh, and so Andrew, what, this is, is just the very beginning, the design. And we received some notes earlier this summer with, I mean, have, you know, four million dollar price tag. That's if we do every single item and we have no intention of doing anywhere near that, but just wanting to look at all the options. Uh, our plan is, once the design comes back, um, so have a conversation about that tonight. And once the design comes back, you know, as long as, and I think we've all have said, we're not raising taxes to do this. We're not cutting from services or from road improvements. So we've got somewhat of a narrow window that fits in that price tag. But we certainly want to move forward. Yeah, like I said, it can't, it can't hurt. We're trying to, this land is doing nothing for us, trying to do something that's just yet another attraction as we go after these commercial and retail to, uh, as we look at ways we can market and promote ourselves to hopefully open up the doors to some people moving in. So that's where we are with that. You know, to me, I think this would show retailers and commercial developers that, you know, we're serious about, about investing, doing this. And it was, oh, five years ago, Sunflower Commerce Park looked a lot like that. It was land that had moved, had been for sale forever. Came in, made an investment on some infrastructure and now look at it.
Yeah.
It's kind of where we're hoping.
Take a step, yeah, I think it's, makes a lot of sense to me.
But with that, and we had last week, last week, and we had our fall festival at the rec center. And I think just about everybody was there. I mean, we had people parking blocks away, we've outgrown that space. And I think just about everybody was there, I mean, we had people parking blocks away, we've outgrown that space. So this is a good problem to have, but it is an issue, because as I said, we've got the cost, we've got, you know, where's that, how, how does all this fit together?
Well, just for my point, as an economic developer, not only from a resident benefit, I mean, there's a lot to like here as a resident, kind of speaking to your constituencies, but I think what you're hitting on is a lot of the issues relate to talent. So having, whether it's kind of that family-friendly, child-centric community with the splash pad or some of the seating in the event of attracting of a workforce, I can tell a lot of your major employers would be keenly interested sort of before you get, you know, additional retail development and restaurant development going, of kind of the, the food truck quarter, the, kind of the art and the food vendors there. So I think all of those kind of speak to the, hey, we're not a place to live, but also a place to work, and kind of speaks to both of those issues. I would, I'm sure maybe you already have thought through kind of the food truck, farmer's market, food truck kind of avenue a little bit there. That can be pretty sensitive when you get to certain types of, that could be a huge advantage when it comes to recruiting restaurants, that you've got a food truck quarter, a place for food trucks here, can also be seen as a deterrent, can also be seen as a deterrent to your food trucks themselves and that if you were to get a lot of traction and momentum out on the street front with a restaurant, hey, wait a minute, there's not enough business. So just think that through a little bit in terms of the types of restaurants, types of retails you're going after, and particularly the, the food trucks themselves, they can get sometimes rightfully sensitive about, hey, wait a minute, I made the investment to come out to this community and sell my wares every Tuesday or whatever it is. But wait a minute, now you're putting in a restaurant just over my shoulder, so think through some of that, I know some communities have kind of tripped up with that. There are restaurants that do both, so that you can have kind of that, that makes a match, and maybe that's part of your approach, is to try to find, a lot of restaurants have started because they started through a food truck, so that could be a, that could be a strategy as well. But just seeing that, I think that, that hits on the food truck courts and the, I know WSU's seen phenomenal success with theirs, certainly downtown's been successful for many years. So that's hitting on a major issue that I know your, your employers are really gonna want, so.
And that's what, you know, here with, with phase one, we're talking about additional parking. A week from tomorrow, we'll be voting here and people will be parking out the grass, we just don't have the parking here. Again, with the updated city hall, I keep beating that drum, that's the same thing we're doing. But having that natural gathering spot for events, like you talked about, and splash pad and parking. You see one thing highlighted there, like the memorial walkway, and that's something we've talked about too, is we can, that'll probably be more phase two, but then I'm thinking, then we go more outside the community and get things sponsored.
Yeah, absolutely.
The park benches, the things like that, so. So, but tonight, we wanted to look at, and want to see if anybody has, have a, you know, what comments, questions you have on these two RFPs. These are both really good engineering companies, we've worked with both, we've been happy with both. And basically now they're the same price, so, you know, Law Kingdom did work originally on that. The Grandiose, everything, we did everything in the kitchen sink type of plan, which was, yeah, a lot more than we originally dreamed about, but, so, but that's for us, just to kind of get in, and then that way, then they can bring back and say, here's what phase one will cost with these three or four items. Here's what phase one will cost with these, you know, kind of the à la carte, so that we can have that pick and choose. Like I said, we certainly want to, and then involve our citizens too with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Why did Law Kingdom and how did they know, did they know what PEC bid? Or how, why did all of a sudden did they lower their price?
They actually haven't lowered it, but they said that they would negotiate.
Yeah, what I did was, the, both of them had presented their, their RFP to me and they were wondering about when council's gonna consider those and things like that, and I told them, well, that they were going to talk about it at a workshop tonight. And then if they were going to make a decision, it'd be in November. And then they each asked, well, what did the other one? And so I said, well, I mean, it's public information, so PEC was twelve, five, and Law Kingdom was fourteen, five, sixty. And the reply I got from Law Kingdom is, well, we'd hate to lose this, because we did the originals, so we're happy to negotiate. So it would be up to council, if you wanted to move forward and, you know, I would think we'd have to talk with Jackie, but, you know, you could say that, you know, you would approve the plan for twelve thousand or whatever from whatever company. If they agreed to it, great, if they didn't, you could go to the other company, but, but that's how they found out, I just told them.
Well, does PEC get the option to lower their price? I, I probably don't think that's quite fair. I know it's an open record and they have the right to know, but to put in fourteen, five, sixty against twelve, five, and then they come back and say they'll do it for twelve, because they don't want to lose this?
You see this kind of stuff.
Yeah, this is, this is the business world.
I, I, I'm not sure that we should make our decision based on costs, on the smaller.
I would say, even if they did, we're only talking two thousand dollars, and this is, you know, out of our, you know, the budget, I mean, we've got what, two hundred thousand left to spend? So without any projects scheduled to come out of that, so, which will roll out next year, so, I mean, twelve or fourteen thousand is gonna, we're not talking a major amount here. So I guess, I, yeah, I, I think I'm with Councilman Smith, we probably need to focus on which is the best RFP.
I think the advantage with Law Kingdom is that they've got maybe more background and context, the advantage with PEC, so it might be a fresh perspective and get some different ideas in the mix there.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I got this.
Yeah, I'm.
So, so one of the questions would be, you know, is this, is, you know, are we comfortable putting this on the agenda to make a decision on, you know, moving forward with phase one design, and then at that point you would decide, you know, at the council meeting, which one you would prefer?
Well, I think you know where I'm looking, I'm not a favorite, because, because I just don't think it's the right solution for now. If you come up with a, a gesture to come alongside, I'm, I'm all for this, but I think it'd be a mistake for us to do it on our own. I don't think the citizens want it either, when I looked at the, the study done in twenty sixteen, sixty percent of them were against this idea. Only forty percent are in favor of it, and so, you know, it's, this is why I, I just don't think so, I think for now, until you get an investor to come alongside.
I, I think overall, I think a lot of the citizens are in favor of, you know, some investments in parks and, you know, some investments in some new features in parks. And I'm certainly not opposed to that, I share in some of your concerns about thinking of this more of a, a way to, you know, spur on some investment to buy those specific lots. I'm not sure that I'm sold that, you know, we should go spend a million dollars or four million dollars on a park to sell a hundred thousand dollars worth of land and get those businesses there. So my, my main concern is, I guess if I were to boil it down to it, is how, if, if we want to go make a park investment and spend some money to, to build a park out front, how are we gonna pay for it? And if we, you know, find money to pay for it, you know, I, I almost think we should set a budget for what we're gonna pay for and then ask for some engineering to be done to fit that budget, as opposed to asking, you know, how much would it cost to build this grandiose, you know, mega park?
And, and that's, that's a fair point, but I think if you, if you look at, and this is dynamic, I know that it can change, but if you look at our, what is it, budget, the debt limit that we're, we're under under state law. Ted said, right now, and it's very dynamic, it's gonna change in an instant, but right now it's about four million, okay? Well, if we have four million pushing debt, where are we gonna go with that? We still have Woodlawn, we gotta, we gotta, and we don't know what the cost of that will get, so we don't have that, you know, get some water, that can come in. And where does that put us? The worst thing for us to do as a city is to put ourselves in a situation where we have no cushion on our debt limit and, and then something catastrophic happens, we can't, we can't find a way out of it.
Well, the thing with the land debt, because that goes through the PBC, so that actually isn't going to affect the city's land debt the way I understand that, right? It's not, especially, right?
So, so the way land debt is, is, and that's a state statute that sets land debt, not land debt, I'm sorry, our debt limit. And it's based on our assess valuation. So, so how that fluctuates is that if your assess valuation goes up every year, then your debt limit goes up. If you pay down debt, then your debt limit goes up. So, so that's where, that's where the question is, we don't, you know, in the past, it's been, our assess valuation has been going up about seven percent a year. So that means our debt limits increased by seven percent a year. And then you pay down debt, which are, you know, for streets, because the debt limit, the, the, water and sewer, stormwater do not count against debt limit. Our land is under the PBC, so that doesn't count against debt limit. And so, but streets do, so that's like you said, the wood lawn. And it, but there's things that you can do to, you know, change your, for example, intersections are, of streets are not part of the debt limit. So, you know, there's things that you can go and start pulling out intersections and stuff that's in front of schools can be exempt, so, I mean, there's, it's just.
It's very dynamic, it's not easy to set down, say, this is what it is.
Exactly, it can change a lot, so, yeah, and I agree, that, that, that was my thought too, is, you know, as far as construction, is to, to set, really set a limit of, okay, you know, I think the mayor's thought was that we, since we sold that partial to, for the senior housing over here, that saves us roughly a hundred thousand a year in special assessments that we were paying. And so if we shifted that money that's already budgeted over to this, and we borrowed for ten years, that'd be a million dollars. So I think it would be wise to say, okay, if, if we were to build this, citizens, you know, we're gonna cap it at a million, that's what we feel like, or seven hundred and fifty, whatever. I mean, you guys decide what that is, and then they could tell us, okay, so a restroom's gonna be twenty thousand, the parking's gonna be a hundred and fifty thou, you know, and then go to the citizens and say, okay, you know, these are the things we have to have, have to have parking. But, you know, splash pads, fifty thousand, you know, a seating area is a hundred thou, you know, what, what are the things, this is all we have to spend, what all, would you like to see in phase one? Because if not, what we typically see is everybody wants everything, and then it gets so expensive or, you know, no one's paying for it.
The hundred thousand a year that we're no longer spending as a result of that land sale, that's in the land bank, is that correct?
The, yes, so the land was in the land bank. But the, the land bank, we transfer money from the general fund to the land bank to make payments for special assessments and debt and stuff. Now, if, if the land bank sells some land, then we, we don't have to transfer as much and we can use that land to pay a principal or something like that.
I'll just say, I'm not in favor of borrowing money to put in a park, I don't want to lose taxes and I don't want to borrow money. But if we, you know, if we've got funds, I, the, the one thing that I've heard people say that they really want here that we don't have is a splash pad. That seems to be the big thing that I've heard that we're missing, that's really the only thing anybody's told me that they really want. But I almost wonder if we should evaluate adding a splash pad to one of our existing parks, as opposed to, you know, going down, you know, a million dollar project.
I hear you on that, but if you look at the natural progression of the town with the seven percent growth for the last, what, four years? And then it's projected to continue at seven percent for at least the foreseeable future. I mean, you're talking about in the last ten years, last thirteen years, the town's doubled in size. You know, the Bel Air days and the, and the park and the, and what used to be the Fall Fest, used to be at Woodlawn Park. Well, the city outgrew Woodlawn Park to hold it there. If you look at, you know, the, the Fall Fest now is at the, the Rec Center, which isn't really conducive for a, a gathering like that. You can tell by all the kids around, it's just not a great place to have that. I think, you know, I, I do think this could spur a lot of retail and economic, but just the fact that, that the city deserves this to, to have a place for the citizens. I mean, if you look at all the new growth that's coming up, you know, on Rock Road, down Fifty Third Street, you know, between Woodlawn and, or Webb and Rock Road, there's a lot of houses going in, I mean, there's, there's a lot of underserved people that don't have park space, like, I mean, I'm close enough to Woodlawn Park that I could, you know, my kids could always just go there and, and with ease. But, you know, we're just, the way the town is spreading and naturally growing, I think this is, is just a, a super need for the, the town anyway. You know, like I said, I think, I think it will spur economic, I mean, that's, I'm not, I'm not a prognosticator, I can't tell the future. But, you know, just based on what we've been told by, by Marlin and Jerry Jones, when he's here, and, and that, that developers are looking for that natural gathering spot anyway, I think that that could really help out, but just, just having the park for, for the citizens, I think is just a hugely important deal. I mean, like, you know, Councilman Elsoff says he has to drive to other towns to take his kid to a splash pad. I mean, you know, his kids, he can't just let it run around in the pool, because they're young enough, they, you know, it's not good, and with him having four of them. And yeah, you can imagine him trying to corral four kids at a pool, but at a splash pad, where they're all, you know, there's, there's a lot less danger anyway. You know, I, I think, you know, and that's what, if we want to continue to attract young families, I think that, that is something that's sorely needed.
Oh, and I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, but this would be wonderful, I love this idea, I love this vision. I just am thinking of this maybe more as a nice to have right now than a need, and I think we might have some other needs that we might need to spend our money on first before we get here, and I kind of wondered, could there be maybe a more short to medium term solution to satisfy some of those, you know, desires for the splash pad by doing something a little more short, short, short term now and add one to an existing park, and then five, ten years from now, when we've sold all of our land and, you know, life is grand here in Bel Air, then we'll have a surplus of cash to just go pay for a park like this and put it in.
Yeah, I like it a lot.
Just, just thinking outside the box, kind of like, yeah, okay, I was talking with one of the fire guys at the, fire, the proper guys at the, at the Bel Air Fall Fest, okay? And he said that Southern County is looking at possibly moving the fire station to Fifty Third and Rock. I don't know if you've had any discussion.
Yeah, they've been talking about that for the past five, ten years.
So, so, okay, it looks like they're gonna end up with a new fire chief in January, or whenever they find one, I mean, the, the current one is retiring at the end of the year. And maybe, maybe the thing is, encourage them to, the new fire chief to, to do that. And then you have the old fire station where you can go with that splash park and right next to the park that's already there, at a less cost. I don't know if, if that's right or not, because I have country and I'm probably, just, just throwing an idea out there.
Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, I really want the fire station to stay where it is. Due to the fact, Bel Air is growing so fast, and if they move them to Fifty Third and Webb, what was the time estimate on that for response to people in Bel Air, when, about close to eight to nine minutes?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Or less than that, huh?
I think it's seven, like seven and a half or something.
Seven and a half, and now with them on Woodlawn, they're more like two and a half to three minutes. So I don't want to take that away from the residents of Bel Air. And they go through the expense of raising the money or raising our taxes to build a new fire station for out there when we've already got one here, and to my knowledge, I don't think that fire station needs a whole lot of repair or upkeep, but probably needs some, because it's fairly old. But I can count probably ten times a day, those firemen are going over to the Capitol Hill. And they're going north a lot. And so I would not be in favor of moving a fire station that far.
And that's something the county.
We got people here that need.
Do we have a say in that, Mr. Mayor?
No, we, yeah, yes and no. Yes and no.
I mean, if you push it, maybe you get that. I mean, if you push it, maybe you get that.
Right. But I just want, a couple of comments. I mean, Councilman Benage and Councilman Smith both bring up some good ideas and suggestions, and I, I so appreciate having ideas. This is what we need, is kind of different ideas, and I like that, but I heard the term short term, and that's where I'm trying to, yeah, I like, you know, Councilmember Hawes was talking about even kind of just taking out the economic development part of it, just the fact, having something fantastic for our city, this is a time where we can kind of put, you know, something that we can look back on a few years around and say, this governing body did this for this community. Except we've outgrown spaces to have the Easter egg hunt. How many thousands of kids rubbed the Easter egg hunt last year?
Thirteen thousand eggs.
Yeah, thirteen, how many, you know?
We had, I can't remember the count right now.
Five kids, no.
Yeah. And again, at the Fall, and some of those getting into the safety thing, you saw at the Fall Festival, and I'm going to put Chief Hattler on the spot, if, if, but you saw, you know, cars were parked on both sides of the street, we had people really getting over to move through, we had people parking in residential's, and even some driveway block complaints. I mean, it's just, the time has come for the city to, to grow up and look long term, look at the big picture, to where at the very end, if in 10 years now, we have a great gathering spot that can hold all this, and somehow everything goes south, and we're a bedroom community, and we don't have any economic development, but we haven't raised taxes, and we have this paid for at that time, that's still a good thing. We have a great thing for the community, and a thing that we can be proud of, with the added benefit that at the same time, we can use this as a way to, and this one, hold on, everybody here, tell me if I'm wrong here, to say that to Mr. and Mrs. Developer, Mr. and Mrs. Potential Retail or Commercial Person, we're making an investment in our community, we're going to bring more people to this spot, this is an area where you're going to want to be. So that's why I come from, from the economic development possibility, like you said, none of us have a crystal ball, to the, to the big picture, looking at, you know, what can it be like, I think about, you know, Councilman Elsop and, and his kids, and we all know Justin's going to have a kid pretty soon, you know? And I saw his wife with my grandson, you know? You know, I'm kidding, there's no, no official announcement, but, you know, and I think, and even my grandkids, I think about that, where the, at the rec centers are, we can get closer, I'll go on the rec center too, you know, for rec center stuff, much less for these big event ideas. And again, we're going to see it next Tuesday, people are going to be parking on our fields. And that's not really a good image. I went to Bel Air, I had to park in a freaking field and walk, you know? Now is the time that we can really put a stamp on, on moving the city for moving that needle. That, that's where my passion's coming from, for this, and, and I, again, I just want to reiterate, I'm not talk, that four million dollar thing, I'm talking, I think phase one is your walking path, your natural gathering spot, some restrooms, splash pad, you know, not talking about all these other things. Now, phase one, rock and roll, and we can look at phase two, phase three, phase four, but I think at the very least, we look at phase one, and if phase one is all that we get done, and we do it, and we will do it without raising taxes, because I, I won't go along with raising taxes for something like this. I, I think it's the right thing to do. And that's why we have these RFPs in front of us at 12 or 14,000, so that we know for sure, right now I'm saying all this, but you have my word, guys, if it comes back that phase one is going to be a three million dollar project, I'm not recommending we move forward with it, okay? But we don't know. So, so that's where we are right now. I know, you know, you're saying, I don't want to park, I'm against the park. At this point, I think we need to do, you know, approve the RFPs, this is the next step.
See, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying let's give an investor to do it with us, and then, and then we can move forward.
Well, I think that's a very viable option though, as far as, I don't know about getting an investor actually to do like some of the common spaces and stuff, but have you seen where, where, like, a company might do like a, like a letter of intent type thing? If the city does this, we will-
Yeah, I think you can see that, I, I, it's usually as leverage, it's usually as, hey, can we sponsor this part of it? And you see that in downtown Wichita now with Nester Park, you have West Star Energy or Evergy sponsoring a portion of it, it's not the whole thing, but it's a portion of it, and it's really a, kind of a corporate sponsorship, if you will, they're wanting to see some materials that are brought into the park that help them promote to their customers and some of their programs and strategies. So, I think it could be leveraged for sure, and I think, to answer your question, Mayor, about kind of, you know, for you all to just decide and determine whether it's your residence or kind of the business perspective, I think there absolutely is some advantage to having this particular spot from an economic development standpoint, because again, goes back to what I said earlier about risk. You would be taking out some risk for developers by knowing that you're bringing a gathering, but you're bringing some measure of events and some measure of activity here. I would argue, you probably already have some of that now with City Hall. City Hall's an employment center, it's a magnet of dozens of people coming here. If I was a retailer, or the ones that I've worked with are going, okay, good, our proximity to City Hall, that's important. The school, we know there's daytime traffic there, they're going to look at all those factors, but to know that there's an asset right here that you're going to have some measure, that's one more thing that's going to shave down risk. Is it going to be the one factor that makes a, a restaurant go out here out front? Probably not, but it will help shave down risk, and that's, again, I think that's what you should be aiming for.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to share some thoughts, if that's okay?
Please.
Um, I just wanted to mention, we heard Councilman Benage bring up the community survey and the results, I think the number you said is that 40% residents were in favor of a park, but 60% were against it. And I've got the survey in front of me, and it's actually the opposite of what you stated. It's 60% of residents favor investing in a large community park, 63% approve walking bike paths in the community park, 62% felt Bel Air should develop a park adjacent to downtown, I think we take that as City Hall. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that data was accurate.
Let's get that great data, because, I'll tell you after where it is, we'll give you a minute to find it here. Leveraged city-owned land adjacent to City Hall. 40% respond to supported leveraged city-owned land adjacent to City Hall. Page 12, that survey.
Right, I don't think that's investing in a large community park. That's a different.
It's, it's the same land, it's, it's the same-
But we're talking about investing in a park. As many as-
Well, I just wanted to make sure that was out there, and that we were talking about the right, you know, the same, the same numbers. One, one question I had was, the current design that's out there on our master plan and our Central Park Commons Plan, that design was by LK. How does that fact that they've already created that design affect our decision? Are we talking about, uh, the, entering into the design phase would be scrapping that or going with that, or what? How does that fit in here? Because I haven't heard any presentation about how that works, and I just, I don't understand that.
So, it's, it's building onto it. So, um, so when I sent out the RFP, I sent a copy of the master plan to both, or all the companies, I actually sent it out to, I think, six or so, and saying, this is what the vision of the master plan is, now we want to do phase one. We heard from citizens that there's, you know, and it lists on here all the things that they liked, um, and we know we can't do all that in phase one, and so what we need is a company to actually design phase one, and what's going to be included in phase one. And if it's not in phase one, it may be in phase two, or phase three, or may not even be at all. So what this is doing is narrowing down that kind of overall master plan to, phase one is going to be this, and these are the things that would be included. And then, as the mayor said, so that's, that would be the next step, and then the step after that would be the decision of councilors, you know, are, do we want to build this now? We know what's all going to be in it, we know what the price tag is going to be, how do we pay for it, uh, do we want to move forward on this? And then that, just, then that decision would be, okay, then do we go out for bids to actually construct it? So what, what the RFP is, is bringing to you is the design of phase one, what that would include and what that would cost. And you could have them decide the cost, or you could set the budget of, you know, all we want to spend is X amount. But that's what the RFP-
So, I was just going to follow up, so, so it's not, so this isn't even a template for what the design is, right? This, I mean, I've got a lot of-
It's an example.
Right, but I just didn't know if, since this is an embedded cost of, that this design already exists, or, you know, how much are we committed to it? That, that's irrelevant, that's what I'm trying to-
Right, yeah. So what you're going to do, because, you know, you had mentioned, uh, a, a restroom is important, and of course, nobody said, well, I want a restroom, you know, I want a splash pad, I want this, I want that.
Yeah, that's one of those things, that's one of those things that, yeah.
But when you get the splash pad, everybody's going to say, where's the restroom?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so you gotta have the restroom. So that would be, and, you know, some of the concerns about, I think, you had some about, you know, how does it lay out in there and things like that, so that would be-
You can't have crosswalks, crossing parking lots.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so at what phase do you, you know, council, the council, you know, has a lot of detailed input that, you know, we all want to provide, at what point in the process would that come into play here?
Um, well, that would be as, you know, through the whole process. I mean, ultimately, the idea is to get citizen input on, you know, what it is that they want, and like I said, if you say, um, you want to spend a million dollars, or 750,000, whatever that may be, and then they will put price tags on all the different things, okay, restroom's 20,000, splash pad's 50, parking lot's 100, and then they'll list all of the things that, you know, everybody wanted from the original master plan, and they'll say, okay, it's going to cost all things that you, you know, all these things that were in the original master plan is four million dollars, um, we only have a million to spend, what's the most important thing? Well, everybody said they wanted a splash pad, so we got to put a splash pad. We, council knows, we got to have a restroom in there, so we got to put that in there. And so ultimately, it would be your decision, after all the public input is, you know, these are the things we want, you're going to say, okay, we're going to spend X number of dollars, these are the top priorities that we can fit in with that, um, we agree with the way it looks, we think we're concerned about the crossing here, those kind of things. So it'll be ultimately your decision on how it, it actually looks when we're done.
So I just, I just wanted to share, I, I spent a couple minutes on Microsoft Paint, adding some ovals.
This is yours?
I, I kind of spoke into it, yeah, so I-
So you sold a lot of buildings.
Well-
Yeah, I like this.
I apologize, I didn't, I didn't-
Which one's the change?
I didn't have an electronic file.
Well, so, so-
That does look like Trader Joe's.
It was three circles, right? So-
Jeff Elsop's got Trader Joe's down in Bel Air.
So the pink or purple cir, circle would be either the splash pad or, or whatever, and then the green area with the path around it, but you can see the parking lot is like up against the, or the road, so that's just like, I've spoken about it in, in past workshop, but that's, that's just kind of like, what is in my mind when I'm thinking phase one? Now, the green space maybe would be a part of phase one, maybe, maybe not, again, cost thing, but, you know, in my mind, one of the major focuses of this is this is creating that gathering place that the mayor has always mentioned is prime to, um, encouraging, you know, whatever the, the retail or commercial development would be around there, that that, that's, that has to be there in the beginning, or, or whenever that is. Maybe it's not phase one, maybe it is, but, um, the, the purple and pink circles represent the space where potentially, uh, splash pad, restroom, possible playground, you know, that type of thing would be close. So we'd kind of build out from City Hall, is, is the thought process. So I just threw that as just a quick visual reference, so you can kind of just see something.
I mean, I, I, you know, um, my opinion of this has always been that, you know, phase one definitely, it, it has to provide something for everybody in Bel Air.
Yeah.
Um, that's why I think the green space and the walking path are very, very, very important, you know, a splash pad, and then obviously a restroom is very important. Um, you know, because then it, it does provide something for everybody in Bel Air, we're not going to just say, okay, this is for the families, this is for this, this is, this has got something for everybody, and I think that's an important part to phase one. I think as the phases go by, and we, if we decide to add a community building, I mean, that's obviously that limit, it's limited use for, for everybody, or, you know, we, we, you know, in six years down the road, there's, you know, everything's sold, and they decide to put a pavilion up or something like that, I mean, but I think, like I said, I think, I think what Councilman Elsop has here is, you know, it does have that little bit for everybody, and I think that's, you know, one of the important things of phase one.
One of the things that I'm, I'm trying to communicate here too, is, and I can speak a bit to it, is I want to keep it simple, because we're talking about, we, you know, we want our, we want our budget, obviously we want it as tight as possible, we want high efficiency in how we're spending our money. So, you know, the thought process is like the walking path encircles the green space, so we're only growing grass in that center section, we're watering just that area, the path is on the outside, you know, that's kind of like where I'm coming from, trying to, you know, we want to-
You know, and something like that doesn't sound like it's going to cost a million dollars, and I, I'll be a lot more on board with someone that costs you fifty thousand.
It's high value, right? So, yeah, so I just want to-
Yeah.
Get that out there and make sure that we're, you know, you guys are seeing what, what, what my, what I'm envisioning, and how we can steer the design towards that more high value, what's, what's really important to get, you know, and the-
Well, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm not an engineer. But, you know, like, with what Councilman Elsop's saying, is, is if, if the design is right, you're going to minimize expenses down the road too. You can't put a splash pad over here and then put the restrooms over here, where plumbing, you're, you're running, you know, extra far, you're running sewer extra far, you know, some of the, some of the things, you know, obviously some lighting would be important inside the park, um, you know, you can maybe do some of that, some extra electrical upfront, so you're not paying extra later, um, to, for future growth things too. I mean, if you're talking about a 5% increase in cost compared to if they had to go and redo the electrical for additional buildings later, it's probably a lot more expensive. I mean, you know, being, being as frugal as possible with this.
The other benefit that having it actually designed is then we can go solicit money. You know, we can say, okay, we're going to have park benches around here, public, would you like to dedicate a $500 park bench, or 300, whatever it is, and we can put a little plaque on there in memory of grandma, or, you know, whatever. We could go to Intrust Bank and say, would you like to be the sponsor of the splash pad? And it's Intrust Bank Splash Pad or something. But we have to have something to show them to say, you know, it, how much would you be willing to support? If you'd support 10,000, we could do a small pavilion for 10,000 and name it for you, and it would be right here. But right now, it's kind of difficult to go say, well, you know, they're going to look at us and say, well, what, you know, what would I be supporting? Well, how much you want to give?
How much you got?
Open the vault.
How much you got?
Whole thing.
We, we fundraise all the time, and that generally doesn't work. Having a plan and having a story to tell is always much better.
Okay, so, and I'm hearing a consensus, so we'll have this on the next agenda, so I urge you guys to look at the RFPs, appreciate all the, the input, and it sounds like we'll have a lot more discussion on exactly what's going to go in, and what timeline.
Is, is this an RFP?
No, that's, that's what was just interesting, is back, you know, when the, this area was being, the idea of all those Central Park and stuff, that was the master plan back in 2002, of what, and that's why City Hall's where it is, and what was supposed to be around it, and it's kind of interesting that it's still looking sim, a little different, but similar to what you're talking about now.
Okay, I just was confused on exactly what that was.
Yeah, you know, it was just-
I was like, is, is that somebody's proposal?
Nope.
All these mixed views. One of these was a sushi restaurant.
Well, the real trick would be getting it in $2,002, can we get that?
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, well, appreciate, you're truly welcome to stay, and thank you, thank you.
Mr. Council, thank you very much.
Will Anne have an opinion on which company we should go with?
Uh, who cares?
Because we, we use them both, they have to be, both great companies.
Is it worth asking for input?
No.
She doesn't get, we can, if you want me to, but, um-
I don't think so.
She'll be fine with either.
Okay, if she's fine with either, sounds like we-
Now, she'll want to be involved with the parking and all the infrastructure and stuff, that's very important, how that plays out.
Okay. That was my concern with Jeff John.
By the way, the NBA, did you have to see our gentleman selling stainless windows?
He put those little dots together, whatever they were.
Well, yeah, I mean, my opinion, we need to-
Chief Hattler, if you want to come up, we're going to-
We'll have more parking at City Hall.
Right, because look how close that is. A car back out.
All right, I'm gonna move us to Chief Hager, and this is something, Justin, you brought up wanting to talk about speed limits, so. Did you ask your questions?
Yeah, yeah, so I only brought this up because I just thought it would be appropriate for us to all at least take a current look at what our current speeds are, I'm not sure when the last time council reviewed current speed limits was, but I know our cities changed and traffic changes, and we've got new data from our speed limit radar thing, and so I just thought it would be a good discussion.
He's called Megatron. Megatron.
Is that, is that the official name?
It is him. Well, here on the map, you see what it is currently. You've got the handout. I'll just real quick go through them, on Webb Road, on Greenwich Road, it's fifty-five. On Webb Road. It's forty-five to Forty-Fifth Street, and then fifty-five north to K two fifty-four highway. On, on Rock Road, south of, south of Forty-Fifth, that's into the Willaband area, it's thirty-five. But north, it's forty-five until you hit Fifty-Third, and then it goes to fifty-five. That's, that's one that we wanna discuss sometime in the future, because with the addition of the apartment complexes and more traffic, the school district, the buses, fifty-five is pretty fast for Lycie Street. And so you might wanna consider for safety a reduction there.
Is that a recommendation?
Not yet.
Okay.
I would like to back it up with, with facts, but it's just, it's a fifty-five zone, something slower would be safer for the community.
I drove it yesterday, and there were some really big potholes that I didn't think were appropriate to drive at fifty-five.
Now, I'm busy with Ann about that.
Chief, staying with Rock Road, what do you think on the forty-five mile per hour because of the additional housing that's been added onto Rock?
And with, with, as that expands, that would be lower also. I just say, up here, fifty-five seems fast. And yes, there we go, over on the stretch from Forty-Fifth to Fifty-Third, we've got two new housing additions that are dumping out onto there, and then we're gonna have, is senior care facility gonna have a Rock Road exit?
I think it's just on the Central Park, right?
Okay, but we're, it has a lot of traffic. And we'll have problems when, when we go to change it, when that time comes, because people are used to going faster. They're not gonna wanna go slower, but.
And there's no shoulder on that road.
Right, yeah, no. Then over on Woodlawn, it's forty miles an hour from Wichita on up to Fifty-Third, where it changes from fifty-five until you get to two fifty-four highway, where it drops in Kechai. Yeah, where it drops to forty miles an hour right before you get to K two fifty-four highway.
Is that Kechai's speed limit sign?
Yeah.
Seriously, it is the world's fastest.
So then, then I'll move over to Oliver, and that is forty miles an hour all the way to Kechai, where it drops at the railroad tracks to thirty miles an hour, and that is something that was done a number of years ago. I think that the council matched that up, because they came to forty.
They made us put it back.
To forty?
Thirty. We tried to lower it to thirty, and they came back around and said, no, you can't do that. You've got to do it at forty.
Right, yeah, and that's because of the manual on uniform traffic control devices.
The road we did that with too, was it? Was it Rock Road that we changed and put the signs up?
So, and then at some point, here, at four thousand eight hundred north, you know, that we have signs there, and then this is a problem area. Always has been a problem area, it's been magnified because of the increased traffic, because of the Forty-Fifth and Hillside reconstruction, which is getting close to being completed. So we're hoping that some of the problems we're seeing with speeders over here is gonna reduce when that is opened back up, so that coke traffic and everybody else that uses it can go back to using Forty-Fifth and Hillside. So, then on Fifty-Third, it's forty miles an hour all the way across till you get to Webb Road, and then from Webb to Greenwich is forty-five, and then forty miles an hour from Oliver on over to just, there's a quarter section there that isn't ours, so right, it's Sawmill Creek, but it's still forty. And then you go over to Webb Road, and there's a quarter section there that belongs to the city of Wichita, and then on the other side of that, about halfway to Greenwich, at the hedgerow, it's fifty-five till you get to, till you get to Greenwich Road. And then we have our forty mile an hour speed limit along Thirty-Seven Street. The only outlier as far as speed limits is this little section right here, that's twenty-five miles per hour. I don't know why it's twenty-five miles per hour, because it's a residential area, and it should be thirty.
All residential is thirty otherwise, right?
I don't know why it's twenty-five, but that would be a consideration to raise back up to meet the state standard of thirty miles an hour in a residential area, unless you find some reason to keep it at twenty-five.
There used to be a blind child that lived on that street, but I don't think they lived there anymore. And that's why it's still at twenty-five, there's a blind child playing or something.
Well, but see, that would be a consideration for some action in the, in the future. And I believe it's everything from Kruger on over to Oliver Drive, and Forty-Eighth on the north side, Forty-Fifth on the south side. Any questions I can answer?
Is that in twenty-five in that area?
Yes. No, that's thirty. I believe it's thirty, yeah. Where it connect, it's just that Kruger, where it wraps around, and everything, everything west of Kruger.
Is there kind of a highlighted area that gets more traffic tickets than another?
Yes.
Okay, not just an area, a whole lot.
And one of the issues.
I'm anxious to get home.
Years ago, I got stopped along there because it looks like it's rural.
It looks like it should be fifty-five.
The sign, because they're right there by the hedgerow, and it looks rural. So you think it's rural, but then.
And now we've got senior housing going up there and.
Right, so, you know, I don't give any favor raising that, but with what's coming on now, I'm not.
We're looking at, you were talking about Oliver?
Right.
Yeah, we're, this is where we're looking at some senior housing, correct?
Right.
Yeah, and as this builds up, a couple of reasons. Number one, on the north side of Fifty-Third, it's forty miles an hour again. And then down here, it's forty miles an hour again, for, for south of Forty-Eighth Street. So that strip, although it's inconvenient now for many people, having to keep that speed down, as we grow that area, as you have development right here on the corner, you would have to reconsider to probably go back, yeah.
What about, can we put like ten speed limit signs?
I really like your flags.
We put flags on them. The council, the transportation was really super with providing those flags free of charge for us. We just had to ask, and they're getting a little tattered, so we might ask them for some new ones.
Put a big spotlight on them at night.
And you would, we still stop people who, who ask, well, how am I supposed to know what speed is? White sign, ten letters, two numbers.
One-two hit flag.
Who's the, the one off of Woodlawn over at Oliver?
We talked about it today.
Well, is there a speed limit sign between Forty-Eighth Street and Fifty-Third?
Really, I believe by, by statute, we're only required to have one at the beginning of the major intersections, but sometime in the past, they've, they've put some additional ones here, good idea, you know, that I don't think they're required to be there, and that might be to keep people from, that are pulling off of Forty-Eighth Street, to keep them from just taking off.
How much, how much does it cost to put in a speed limit sign?
A bunch.
I, I know it's probably.
Oh, you gotta.
Blowed it beyond.
And make one in the garage.
Well, you can't make them in the garage goofy, you gotta have, you buy them.
I mean, I, I just, by my own experience, I mean, I think it would be helpful to have one that's just north of Forty-Eighth Street.
Well, there is, it's at four thousand nine hundred north. Here's, here's Forty-Eighth, it sits right here next to that, next, north of the small pond at the hedgerow.
See, the only issue, the only issue I have with it, I think, if I remember right, I could be wrong about this, but I think there's a bunch of trees out there at that area.
Well, as soon as it opens up.
It's not obscured.
Yeah.
It just, it throws people off because of that.
I think we could benefit from another one north of that too, even in that open area, because that, that's the main road that I had concern with, because I, I hear people, you know, talking about how it feels like you're in the country, that's a wide road with a really big shoulder, why are we only going forty miles an hour there?
Because of the sign.
Well, because they're, they're attentive drivers, and they don't look.
So there was a, I'm sorry, go ahead. There was a question about volume that we write here, this blue, which is probably what, thirty to thirty-five percent, are written along here, and the majority of those tickets are for like ten and over. So we're not writing for six miles an hour, seven miles an hour, nothing like that. We're writing, you know, ten miles an hour over, and I've written a lot of those, and they're fifteen and over, so.
What period of time is that?
This is from, this is from January first to now, to today. And then we, we write a lot, a lot of these people that we stop don't have liability insurance. The second most written street is Woodlawn, and I've tried to get the officers to hit Woodlawn, because that's within the residential area, that's where our safety issue is, big concern. Oliver is concerned because of a lot of the traffic with the school, okay? A lot of kids take, take Oliver and Fifty-Third to get to Heights, and they speed. Now, I just talked to one, actually, a Kechai officer stopped him for us because they were doing seventy-five.
Oh my gosh.
So, and then they, she called me over, and I had a chat with the young man that called his dad, and then they had a chat.
Chief, I don't recall, when you're southbound on Oliver from Fifty-Third, where's the first speed limit sign?
Right there at Fifty-Third.
It's, it's right, it's right away.
And then the second one is here, just north of Forty-Eighth.
And they all have orange flags on them?
And they have orange flags on them, but they don't have spotlights.
It's the, it's the terrain, I mean, there's something about that area that it just feels like you're not going fast enough.
And I've heard it mentioned, you know, speed trap, when somebody's doing fifty miles an hour over, there's no trapping at all.
Yeah, no, I agree, I just, it's so easy to go so much faster on that street.
It's, it's.
It's, it's something in the spatial size, there's just something about that street.
Listen, I remember when Rock Road, before Walmart was even there on Rock Road, when I was a senior in high school, and we came back from after prom, on down Rock Road, and I'm not gonna tell you how fast we were going. But it was in the city, and we were going above the speed limit, just because it felt rural, even though it was, I mean, you know, this is the same problem, I'm sure Wichita has the same problem on Rock Road between Thirteenth and Central, because there's, there's nothing there, I mean, you got the Wichita Country Club on the one side with the brick wall, I mean, it feels like you should be going away faster than forty, I've, I've looked down, I'm going forty-eight, I'm like, whoa, I just can't believe it.
Is there some.
But I mean, the fact that we have extra signs on that road already, I mean.
What about, what about a creative sign, what's, what's, like, what's another sign we can put up that's not the speed limit, but something else that says, hey?
A sign that says the speed limit is still forty oh, like forty-five. I thought of that, and then I thought against it, and I thought for it, and I thought against it, and I'm, I'm, I'm right there right now.
I would like to.
You know, I'm, I'm all about sarcasm, I am, I, I think that's an actually, an excellent idea, just to, I mean, we could almost do it in, as like little signs on the ground, I mean, you know, especially after political seasons over, all this stuff is going. But put these out, you know, put just some sarcastic signs out, just to get people's minds on stuff, exactly, thank you, thank you.
Is that something we can do?
Yeah, as a city, yeah, certainly law enforcement wouldn't do it, I mean, it wouldn't be a law enforcement project, but it would be for you all.
Do you know?
I'm so in favor of that.
I have some ideas.
Do you know what the, the average speed is on Oliver from our river system?
It's in one of the reports, no, 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 it's not, because I haven't had the sign out, or the sign, we're talking about.
Okay.
Put it over here.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
I've got it, I've got it for Woodlawn, now, last week, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say, third watch, got one over ninety, over ninety, and a hundred and twelve. That's, that's only the ones we caught, and that, and that information that was generated off that sign, on Rock Road, on Forty-Fifth, on Woodlawn, we had people, I don't know whether it's anomaly, but it's very accurate, and motorcycles can go really fast, but we have a couple of them that are over a hundred and fifty.
How much, how much is that, do you think, to try to get it up high, like that? When you have the sign that's.
The sign is, it shuts down.
Okay.
Okay, the sign shuts down, so you can't see how fast you're going, but it doesn't keep them from trying. Okay, so the sign shuts off, so they can't see how fast they're going, but they're still. Now, the other thing with the humorous signs, I believe it's Pratt does this, and on their sign, you know, the speed limit is there, and then down here, we're going slow down, like the current one, slow down. What they've done is fine dollar sign amount, and so they've gone through the effort of, for each mile an hour, okay, up to some limit, they've, they've, this is how much your fine would be.
The schedule of fines.
Can you program that sign to do that? I think that's good.
So, so my, 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 it told me we could do that, we can do that. It's gonna take some effort, and I thought that would, when I heard about that, I, I thought that was pretty cool.
Well, I've watched that sign, and I'm surprised how many are speeding along there at Woodlawn all the time.
I don't think they stop at Forty-Fifth.
Here's some, slow down, we don't need to eat your dust.
We, we have, the majority of our people, I think, drive probably within a couple of miles an hour at the speed limit. Okay, but then we have, especially during rush hour, lunch hour, and coming home, those that can get up to speed, they're not on, they're not on Woodlawn, but.
Or Oliver.
Those three times of the day.
You can't if you drive off over the road.
They, they just, they just take off and go. I stopped a lady in this area right here, she was kicking it up over thirty-five into twenty-five, and then she blasted the stop sign at Kruger and at Forty-Fifth, because she saw that the closest car was all, all the way down at Oliver. She didn't notice that she passed me as she was. I was, I was sitting stationary, and I, I saw her coming, and, you know, that's just too fast. In a resident, in that residential neighborhood, it's posted. Now, what you, you know, what you determine as the speed, that's what we enforce, that's our position. But we have opinions based on our, you're out there every day, and we see how, you know, if you have a forty zone, people are driving forty-eight. If you will come out and ride with me, I will show you exactly what I'm talking about. And because I've got this button on my, on my console, and it's got an X on it, and when I hit that button, it turns on all my front lights, and then right next to it is a siren button. So whenever I see somebody, you know, kicking it up into, into forty, and they're forty-three, forty-four, and they get up to that forty-seven area, forty-six, forty-eight, I hit my front lights a couple times, and as they pass by, I hit my siren, brake lights. And that's what we're going for, just slow down, because tickets for us are changing behavior.
I appreciate that.
We, we wanna change people's behavior and get them to drive the speed limit, and if it's another sign going up, we can do that. We put, we put the flags on top of it. If it's a humorous sign, you know, the speed limit is still only forty, like one we should put up in front of Heasley, because people hit, people hit Resurrection, and they put the pedal down, and they're headed to the highway. That they, well, fifty-five is just up half a mile. That they, well, the fifty-five is just up, half mile up there. I can kick it up. Uh.
Yeah, well, those, those neighborhoods have limited access, right?
Yeah. So, um, any other questions?
So, I was reading on the Department of Transportation's website, there's a variety of different mechanisms that they recommend that you can use to set speed limits. Have, have we selected a preferred mechanism for setting speed limits?
That's an animal.
Okay.
I don't mean to punk like that, but, um, I'm in the enforcement opinion harm.
Okay.
Well, if there's any speed limits you think need to be raised or lowered.
Well, uh.
We'll welcome that suggestion.
This one, I would say Oliver does not need to be raised because of the future growth.
Okay.
Because of, because of growth that's already taken place, we probably need to consider Rock Road north of, uh, Fifty-third lowering that. And working with Keachai because they're a partner, they're right next door. Uh, but, but speaking with Keachai to see what they think. My concern is we have, it's kind of a blind turn. Uh, people coming up over the, the Crest of the Hill off of two fifty-four. Maybe some signage there, you know, but, uh, but to lower that, I think, I don't think you can lower it, lower it to forty. I think by statute you would have to lower it to forty-five. Uh, and then with the additional, uh,
That's what it used to be.
Neighborhoods coming in here, uh, here and here. Maybe, maybe a forty mile an hour. And then you've got your friend over here at twenty-five, whatever you wanna do. And those are my opinions.
Okay.
Since you brought it up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Go on, talk to us about emergency management plan real quick.
Okay. The emergency management plan is an old plan. Uh, we've looked at it for a couple of years now. Keith has had it for a while and he's done some work on it. Uh, are you familiar with the emergency operations plan? Okay, in case of an emergency, we have a plan. Uh, and that is, uh, it's stepped into, to, uh, different phases, based on the seriousness of the event. Uh, you know, an ice storm would, uh, take less mobilization probably than a tornado that cut a swath through town. So, uh, we're working on that to update it. And there, there's a lot of just, you know, like contact information and then maps and, you know, the city boundaries and where we would, uh, where we would meet. That's in the first part. Second part of the plan is the emergency response plan for the Metropolitan Medical Response System. And that is in case there was some type of biological attack or some event, uh, where everybody would need a prophylactic drug inoculation. It would happen at the rec center. Uh, now that has changed considerably over the last five years and it was still being talked about two years ago. So, uh, that one is, is gonna need to be updated also. The debris management plan, anytime there's a disaster, whether it's ice, tornado, wind, we have debris. You know, till now, we've, we've got someplace to take it. But if you have a, uh, tornado come through, uh, a large scale event, we've got a plan where to take debris. And then the emergency water supply plan, uh, that was, uh, last updated in two thousand and five. And we're gonna look at that again because there have been a lot of changes. So.
So, at what point of, of all those plans, do you get a hold of County emergency manager?
Uh, just about all of them.
All of them?
Yeah. Uh, because they're a partner and we work closely with them. Because I'd, and I may have told you before, uh, you can't have all the big expensive toys, but you can have friends that have big expensive toys. So, so if we need big equipment, they might be able to pull it from, from another place and that's part of this. Also, setting up, uh, setting up where to get the things that we're gonna need, whether it's Menards, whether it's Home Depot, local, uh, Newton.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and, and one of those things, we went to the League of Kansas City Municipalities and, uh, they, they had a workshop on emergency management. They said, one of the things we need to be sure we know is who is the county emergency manager? I don't know who it is. I, I assume you guys do.
Carl Link, right?
He, he works out of the fire station.
This fire station?
At, uh, number thirty-seven.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
And his name is Carl what?
Carl.
Link? Okay.
And he's fairly new. He's been there for two years.
Months. We're talking about someone different than that.
Oh, no.
No, the guy I'm talking about is in charge of emergency management. He's at the courthouse.
Yeah, and that, that's one of the things that's changed. Uh, you know, we now, we now go, the, uh, emergency operations center is in emergency communications at seven twenty-seven North Main and, and, uh, and all the things that go with that, that's a separate plan. But, uh, being able to know who to contact in an emergency is vital.
Okay, so just for my education, hopefully everybody else is interested in this, what is the protocol? Who does what when?
That's what's being reworked.
He calls you and you get your butt up here.
Somehow I don't think that's right.
Uh, the, the majority of, of, of the stuff that needs to be done is gonna fall right over there.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're all gonna help. Uh, the police department, of course, has its own area. Public Works has its own. Uh, the rec center, depending on the emergency, will fall in line with one of the others, but if it's one of the medical emergencies, their, their space is being used, so they're gonna be there. Uh, so it's, it's contingent on the type of emergency.
So, he can send you somewhere.
Yeah. Well, I, I knew the reason for the badge. Yeah. I knew the reason for the banana, the, for the badge, but I'm not. But, um.
I don't see a bar code on that. I don't think it's gonna charge anything.
But that was one of the things that they brought up.
It's not charged.
You don't get these badges when the emergency happens. You gotta have it ahead of time. So, that's why that happened, but, but I'm not, I, I mean, I know Betty Ira at that.
And we will, we take.
But I don't know who knows this stuff.
All right, and we will have our city tour here sometime, you know, near future. Show where all these places are and everything, yeah.
And, uh, so, that, that's what we're working on.
Report to City Hall.
Any questions? Any more questions about this? If you.
So, you're saying there's a plan?
There's a plan.
Is that the only copy of the plan?
Um, yes. But you're updating it, right?
I'm updating it.
So, we should get four copies.
Uh, when it's finished?
Let's give him one.
Just gotta.
I'm sure he has one. We need more stuff.
Where is the dump site for debris? Where is, or are there multiple?
Well, it's, it's changed, but it's gonna be out here on, uh, Fifty-third.
So, basically the rush site?
Rush site?
Yeah.
Will you have it in the end center here?
And in, in the event of a, a large scale, uh, situation, it's gonna be a dump site, burn site, uh, because you move stuff out. And then, then too, you, we have to have, uh, uh, say you have tornado, somebody's gotta take care of refrigerators, anything with refrigerant. Uh, we've gotta add to the plan, uh, about, uh, animal control and bringing in facilities to take care of people's pets that are displaced. So, we can get them back home. Uh, just any number of things that are, have changed since this was originally around, so.
So, I, just based on what we've learned here so far, I guess the number one priority, I see it, it is, uh, you mentioned the rec center is the gathering point and that would be a.
For medical emergencies.
Medical.
Okay, so the massive, massive city, I mean, that would be a problem right now based on our population and everything, just based on our fall, uh, festival experience. Do we wanna look at like prioritizing updating that? I mean, presumably, we'd go to City Hall.
I've, I've got to check with the emergency management, uh, group to see if, if they have changed locations too.
Okay.
And, and the rec center part of that, if I remember correctly, is because of the gymnasium. Yeah, a room is.
They can have.
Or here at City Hall, I mean, if we cleared out all this stuff, it wouldn't be enough.
Well, when we had the ice storm back in what, eighty-five? No.
That was like two thousand.
Two thousand five or six.
I think you'd have these multiple sites at this point.
I came up and we had Red Cross set up in the, uh, community.
That wouldn't be big enough for everybody.
We have one of the old police training center.
I mean, I, I would, I would assume that the church, churches would be.
Well, the majority of them went to the Catholic care.
Yeah.
It used to be that, that we staged everything at the location and now they don't.
Okay.
I know that's one of the changes, but, uh, we had a site at the old police training academy and it's just amazing how many people could get in, go through the stations and then be out the exit door. Uh, it, it just happened fast. Uh, and that, and that's, you're getting some and you have X number of kids, you get those packets to take to them with the instructions out the door. Because somebody's right behind you.
Okay.
But his first priority is put his badge in where he can find it and as soon as you have an emergency, you come up here. Somebody will tell you where to go. So, I don't want the mayor and I to be the only one.
Here, I, you know, we, we have, uh, different types of emergencies that can, can strike. We've got, of course, weather, everything associated with weather, weather. Whether it's an ice storm, a windstorm, you know, a downdraft, a tornado, uh, those type of things. But we also have rail lines, uh, on the north and south of us. One cutting through town and the other one, uh, going through Keachai, just south Keachai. And, you know, goodness knows what they carry.
Yeah.
And then we have K two fifty-four with, with all the truck traffic and, you know, they're really safe drivers. But these cars that keep pulling out in front of them, uh, things can happen. So, we, we have to be aware of that. And that's, that's part of what's in this plan is all hazards, uh, type of approach is what we're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody invited him to a workshop and don't keep him till midnight.
Yeah.
All right, I know, uh, we got just a couple minutes left here. Ask Jackie to talk about our minutes. We had done verbatim word for word. That was from a, a previous council and this is something I asked about, actually, went back earlier this year. And then we had dictation. We just, um, I would like to see us just go back to much simpler minutes. I mean, everything is recorded. Anything, you can find the video, the audio online at any time. Um, showing them, save a lot of time for our shitty clerk and everything too. But do we need a formal motion to do that or is that something you can just say, here's how we can do it or should do it? Or, or do you think we should keep the way we are?
No, um, you don't need a formal motion to do it. I know that in the past, well, let me just start from the beginning. You need to know that minutes are your legal record of action that took place in a meeting. The courts recognize your minutes. They have, um, a special status with IRS and different agencies because they're approved minutes. So, they're important, but state statute only requires that you record minutes as a public, um, governing body. It doesn't tell you how you have to do it. Um, there are cities, I know they're out there that do verbatim minutes. Different organizations value having every single word, but in an era where, like Mayor is saying, where you have the, um, video of what happened available to you, it doesn't have the same status. The video is not immediately admissible in court as just like your minutes would be. And it's not, um, it, it would take more work to use that in a legal setting. However, having it there for the day-to-day kind of things that come up where you wanna see verbatim what someone said, you can use the recording for that. That said, keeping your minutes clear and concise, um, it's well within what the, the governing body policy is. In fact, the policy Belair has set, said that minutes shall be recorded and retained, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't say how they have to be captured. And so, it's nice that you can change it during this council. And then if a, a later council, you wanna go back and do verbatim for some reason, you can. Um, and I don't recommend that you put it, you pass a resolution or put it in any, um, specific form.
So, we can just get consensus tonight?
Yes.
Is it, is it, um, beneficial or not beneficial? What if we just said the video recording was the badge?
That was what I was gonna ask. Can we certify that?
I recommend you don't because then if ever you have to offer that as a piece of evidence and video is not admissible or, or if you ever have to turn it to the IRS or some other form, that would have to be transcribed into sometimes a forty-seven page document. Um, so it's good to have the video accompany your minutes. If you really ever needed to get the video into a setting where the city was defending itself, you could. But having those documented written minutes is the, the gold standard.
Okay, I have a question for you.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, obviously, the minutes done now, verbatim or done off recording as of now. Um, is it possible to, let's say we go to the, the simplified minutes. Um, is it possible to then say at a later date, we know that something's gonna need to be turned in for court or something? We can go and amend the minutes to a verbatim by somebody and then that way we have it down.
Um, you can't. In those situations, um, kind of the way that I kinda watch the flow of the minutes, uh, if it's something more serious, uh, and someone were to want their oral.
We ask dictation included, right?
You would at this point ask for, uh, you know, every word you said to go into those minutes.
I'm just talking about like afterwards. I mean, we don't know. I mean, something we could have done two weeks ago, somebody may have had a problem with. Um, and then we need to turn over minutes. Is it possible to amend the minutes as a?
As another reason?
No, it's another act.
And it's, I mean.
So, minutes can never be amended?
Uh, after they've been approved, you're saying you go back and amend them again?
Yeah.
You could, I could see you doing that through a motion. Yeah.
But you can't do it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
You can't do it two weeks later.
Uh.
No.
It, there's a procedure to do it and I don't see that there's a specific law against it. Um, once the minutes are approved, they go and that, that document is retained. You'd have like six months down the road, you'd have an amendment of it, so it'd be harder to find. Possibly? I don't, I'm not sure.
So, I'm just curious, cause as of the, you know, not.
If you're in a legal situation and you wanted, the minutes didn't satisfy what you wanted to prove happened, you could provide supplemental material. Again, it's a lower standard, but it's better that way because generally you're more likely to get into a legal situation where what you said offhandedly, you prefer not to be maintained in the, in the public record forever and ever and ever. So, it's less likely to have.
But the videos are kept forever anyway, so.
But if.
Well, they don't have to be there, right?
They don't have to be.
What is, what is the policy on keeping those videos? Do we have a record retention?
Hey, if it's on the internet, it's never gonna away.
We don't, we don't because we only are required to have a record retention policy for our official, uh, minutes in, in those cases. I'm sure that Tristan has a policy and between YouTube's, you know, longevity plan, we keep the, um, the recorded, uh, videos for a certain point, but it's easier because we're not responsible for keeping that for, cause they're not official record.
What's our retention policy for the formal minutes that are approved?
We keep those forever as of now. The, the, um, AG's office has a, a purge timeline at some point, but I don't see the reason for getting rid of any of the minutes.
I think we should have a policy on our videos that we keep them alive for at least X number of years.
And if you do that, if you kind of, just as, I guess, a bit of kind of advice, if you acknowledge the videos, then you acknowledge the videos. And then they become something that you, it's instead of it being a public service that you offer to allow the public to kind of gain information, now you're having to manage those a lot more differently, a lot more stringently. You're responsible for. Then you're kinda like, if YouTube loses something, then you're having to provide documents. I think the way you're doing it is really effective. If we needed to ever get anything, like if we were in a big suit. We would, um, it'd be nice to know these are official minutes and we'll do everything we can and we would do everything we could to find and retain and, and throw in any additional documents we could to defend any action.
That's why it's really helpful to have Jackie do it.
Yeah. So, do we have a consensus? I, I think, kinda guess we just go to simplify and basically says who makes motions, second, what the votes are, attendance, start and times.
And Mayor, if you'd like, I, I know I said you don't have to do a resolution. If you want at the next minute to have a motion, to have action, um, basically they're action-based minutes and they provide, um, I can give you the language of what would be included, but.
But if you're saying we don't need a motion, I think we have consensus here unless anybody here thinks we need to.
I think you better do the motion maybe. Get it covered up. It's up to you.
But it, it's flex, it's a flexibility thing. If at any point you wanna get, you know what, this meeting, we're gonna do it verbatim, you can change it. If at any point you wanna get, you know what, this meeting, we're gonna do it verbatim, you can change it more quickly if you don't have the motion.
Harvey thinks if we do the motion, we're calling attention to the fact, then we may be raising a lot of questions, why are they all of a sudden changing? So I think that we just hear, unless anybody says elsewhere, I would like to say that I have the council's consensus, that for us to change, beginning with the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Does not bind in action?
It wasn't, it's just a guide, guide line.
You bet.
Then it'd be formal, then it would be binding, right?
Anything else come up under other?
Okay.
Betty wants to go home.
Actually, two minutes, uh, cause Betty actually brought this up, um, to be fair to our staff, with November and December, in years past, we have, uh, foregone having workshops in November and December, especially with Thanksgiving and Christmas, and just all the end of the year stuff. Is that something you guys wanna look at doing? I mean, as of right now, I have no pressing bit that I think needs to come up in a November workshop, certainly, I think that could be subject to change though.
That's why we kind of push this one to the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of the plan, so.
Okay, just one, okay?
I mean, I, I think, I think if, if something pressing comes up, I think we need to change that for December, but as far as right now, I think.
I wouldn't have a concern with having one in November or December if we had topics. The one thing that I think might be coming our way, um, is from the planning commission on the home-based businesses.
That's coming to the council, though.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll wanna review it in a workshop first, we could just do that in a regular meeting.
And if we, you know, I was thinking too, if we wanted to do, if we needed to talk about something, maybe we could have a workshop at six-thirty, or counting.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now we get all that.
Yeah.
That way the staff can handle all.
Yeah.
And everybody.
Unless something happens.
Right.
Something comes up.
Well, I'm not gonna punch you out.
Oh my gosh. Okay, meeting adjourned.
See, things like that, just do you want that recorded, it's the minutes forever?
Hey, I, I want it recorded.
I said I would.